Council meeting, November 19th. I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll second.
Movement moved by Mr. Lawrence. Seconded by Mr. Guines. Is there any discussion?
None.
To suspend the rules. There being none, call for the question. All in favor of suspending the rules. It's approved on a 6-0 vote. If the clerk would note that Ms. Newman is not present. If the clerk would read the revisions, please, to the agenda.
To the policy agenda, we're substituting item 4A, ordinance to amend Chapter 2 for municipal facilities. To the consent agenda, we're substituting 5O resolution only for resolution authorizing change order number 36 for Nikase Brothers. Substituting item 5P resolution only, resolution authorizing change order number 37 for Nikase Brothers. And removing 5R, resolution authorizing entry into Biloxi Schools Facilities Agreement.
Move the agenda as amended. Thank you. Just a moment prior to that, just as another point of discussion, I just want to acknowledge and alert our public here today that we will be going into executive session prior to the consent agenda.
Gotcha.
When we get to that portion of the agenda later today. All right, Mr. Lawrence, I believe you made a motion to adopt the amended agenda.
And I'll second.
Mr. Guines seconded that. Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the amended agenda? It's approved on a 6-0 vote. Thank you. All right, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome everyone to our second meeting in November. I think we do have one more before Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. And part of my report, I'd like to recognize Chancery Court Judge Jennifer Slogel. And give her a few minutes, because I know she's on a tight schedule. But she's a candidate for appeals court judge. Jennifer, would you come up and address the council?
Welcome, Judge.
I appreciate you taking time to hear me today. I am in a runoff election for the Court of Appeals. I am, well, as you know, I've been a Chancery Court Judge, elected four times in Harrison, Hancock, and Stone Counties. My opponent is from Jackson County. And I would like to point out that our district, which makes up of 11 counties, we have two seats on the Court of Appeals. One is already being held by Jackson County. And that's Judge Tony Lawrence. Good guy. But this seat that I am running for has always been held by Harrison County since the Court of Appeals inception in 1995. It is very important that we have a judge from Harrison County in that seat. If my opponent hails from Jackson County, so I would just submit to you today, that is not going to help the coast or represent our district very well to have both judges on that court, both from Jackson County. We need to keep our seat in Harrison County. For myself, I have been a lawyer for 33 years. I'm not going to tell you how old I am. You can do the math. But the last 14 I've been a judge, I've been elected four times. My opponent has never been elected to any public office. She serves in a very good court, a municipal court, as a part-time judge for the last three years appointed by the mayor. Again, very, very important court, but not elected. I would also like to point out that, as a judge, I have been sorely tested. And I have been put under tremendous pressure. And I have faced a lot of political pressure. And I have managed it and made the rulings that I have made, which were upheld on appeal. And I am willing to stand up to political pressure. My judgments have been affirmed or upheld on appeal 32 of 33 times. So I have a record of making very sound legal decisions. And so I would certainly represent our district and our county well. Are there any questions that I could answer for anyone?
Tony Lawrence, that's my nephew.
Oh, all right. Nice guy.
And I'm also his godfather, so.
Well, I said he was a nice guy.
I had two brothers living in Jackson County.
No offense against Jackson County, no offense. But I think that we need to keep our seat in Harrison County because we need to represent the entire district. And I think, that's my point. But anything else? All right, thank you all so much.
Thank you, Judge. You're doing a great job. Thank you so much.
The election is in one week from today. Please urge people to vote. It is the only thing on the ballot. But the Court of Appeals is an important, is an important seat. Thank you.
All right, Judge. Thank you. Best of luck. Best of luck. And I think that concludes my report.
That was an outstanding report, Mayor.
Try. Thank you.
There are no departmental reports. Well, excuse me, we'll move to council reports. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I know that last week they had the Veteran Day Parade. And we have to thank the veterans. The veterans, all the people that still alive to serve the country. You have Memorial Day for the ones that deceased that served the country. But we had these meetings. We can all come here and speak our piece because of those people that go out there and serve the country. So as to be free and to do what we do here. So once again, I'd just like to thank all the veterans. Because we up here have an opportunity to serve the people because of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Guines?
Yeah, I'd like to do the same. All the ones who came out to the Veterans Day Parade. Also, I want to mention, this morning, we had a check presentation for the Crox Center, helping our kids get scholarships within our community. Want to thank the mayor for showing up, for being there as we presented a check to them. Second of all today, we went to a homeless community meeting about the homelessness within the community. Chief Miller was one of the people who were there talking about the homeless. I think we have a couple of things that we can do to alleviate that. It seems like everybody's coming together as a team. With that being said, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Guines. Ms. Newman?
Do we have an update on what's going on with the Broadwater property and police substation and all that?
No change since last week.
That's not good.
We're working on, we've had a couple of meetings with, about a couple of different subjects, different areas. But trying to work way through some solutions that would, once we take some of the Broadwater, clean some of the Broadwater property, is going to push some of the problems at other places. So we're trying to get a strategy on what we do, when we do it, so it doesn't really cause things to move and make things worse. We're trying to make it better.
Do we have more police presence around this area?
I think that's the case.
You do? Hey, Chief.
Or arrests. I think we've had 30 or so arrests in over the last three weeks with regard to homeless and some of the ordinances that they've been violating. But, you know, that's.
Close to 50 arrests.
50 arrests.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mr. McGilvery?
Yes, Mr. President. Mayor, going to have our Ward 4 meeting December 12th at 5:30 at Sunkist. Hope your schedule will allow, along with the directors. Be the first meeting in that ward. Reference North Country Club in Pops Ferry. Could I possibly get a report, a traffic survey or something on the, on that intersect? Well, it's not an intersection, but it's a major problem out there for traffic, as we all know. And I'm sure when the extension gets here on Pops Ferry, it's going to be a major problem. And I had a lot of calls regarding that. This past Thursday, we said farewell to Biloxi Police Retired Captain Louis Soldo at Bradford O'Keefe on Howard. And the funeral home preparations were outstanding. But more importantly, the arrangements made by Chief Miller and his staff and the under guard, fantastic job again. And Chief Miller, I know I speak for the Soldo family. And I know I speak for the residents of Ward 4. And I know the rest of the citizens of Biloxi. Your presentation, your words, comments were outstanding. And again, on behalf of the Soldo family, I want to thank you. I want to thank you and your fine department. You did an outstanding job. And that colludes my report, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. And did you say your ward meeting was December 12th? What time and where?
5:30 Sunkist.
5:30 Sunkist. Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Mr. Glavine?
Thank you. Just a few things. I want to lead off first with new restaurant opening. I know it's not in my ward, but it's exciting for the city of Biloxi. Catch 110. Had the opportunity to go and try some of their food there. And it was really good. Service was outstanding. Good to see that building come alive and give the citizens and visitors of Biloxi another option. Also want to shout out to Biloxi PD. About a week ago, we had some car burglaries in several of the subdivisions along Brody Road. There was some videotape and some other evidence. Within a day or two, I think arrests were made. And I think we deterred some crime in that area and probably future crimes just by the speed which Biloxi PD responded. Chief, you want to comment on that at all?
Yes, sir. You're right. Thanks to some of the residents, we were able to acquire a good bit of, a good bit of footage from that. We were able to identify the suspects. Took them a day or, a day or so to round them up, but we did. And they were just a burglary ring, really. So I think we, thanks to the citizens, I think we deterred a bunch of burglaries that were about to take place.
Well, we want to thank your department and anybody listening. If I got a chance to view a few of those videos that were sent to me by some of the residents, you could see these people walking up into the garage or into the carport area. They would see the camera and turn around. So if you don't think a camera deters crime, it definitely, you could see them kind of whip around and try to go to the next home or car that they felt that they could be successful. But again, shout out for the quick work that y'all did. That was outstanding.
Thank you, sir.
Also want to mention that I have an upcoming town hall meeting. The venue is a little unique. It's going to be at Biloxi High School at the Internet Cafe. Had a chance to visit again that facility. And I think it's going to be an outstanding environment. And I did confirm just today that my wife Lisa will be making her signature pusheradas. That, that's not to lure anybody there, but I'm sure there'll be a few more folks once they find out to try to get to those. And it's first come, first served. I can't promise they'll last forever, but she's making them tonight, actually. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Mr. Shoemaker?
Yes, sir. Just a couple of things. The infamous roundabout at Wool Market Exit is, I guess most people know by now, but there have started, MDOT has started working on that now at night. So from the 17th, a couple days ago, through, I'll have to look. I don't even write it down, but till December, it's for one month. It's going to be closed. The roundabout's closed from 7:00 PM to 5:00 AM. So if anybody's traveling there at night, please make arrangements to go a different direction. Hopefully, it won't last that long, but, but as of now, it's for a month. It's going to be shut down just at night. And from Sunday night to Thursday night. So the weekends, it's not shut down. It's open 24 hours. It's just during the week. Sunday night at 7:00, and then it'll reopen back Friday morning at 5:00 AM. And during the daytime, it's open every day. Christmas parade, we've got our annual Wool Market Christmas Parade, December 14th at 2:00 PM. That's a Saturday. It's always, it's rather big for Wool Market, I think. It's, it's gotten bigger each year. If anybody wants to participate and be in the parade, it's free. They can contact me or Parks and Rec. Email, call. We can get a, just a very generic registration form to fill out. And lastly, I also, I had a Ward 7 meeting last Thursday. First one I think we've had up there in a long time. I think it went very well. Probably around 90 residents showed up. Lot of questions. I think it was very informative. And hopefully, we can do those more frequently moving forward in the future. It was, it was, I've gotten a lot of great feedback from it. So I think it went well. And I know these other guys having them. I think it's something we have to do just to keep the residents and everybody, you know, be as transparent as we can and answer questions and concerns. And I know mine went very well. And with that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, I just want to mention the time. So it's Thursday, Thursday, the 21st. Mayor, I know we got another meeting usually on Thursday nights, but if you can make an appearance, that'd be great. And it begins at 6 o'clock, goes to around 7:30. Also, earlier that day, Kristi Lebatard is having a kind of a workshop on the Cedar Lake Bridge. So I just want to mention that. I'm going to try to make that as well earlier. I may have to leave a little early to go get set up. But I think that's a real important meeting. And then finally, one other item I missed. We did receive the funding for the dredging project on Brazier Bayou. So that'll be coming up. I think contracts are going to be, if they haven't already went out, they're going to be going out shortly. And we can get those projects started as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Mr. Mayor, the IP parking lot, I know they're working on beautification now for months and months and months and months.
Yeah, one more month.
Is, is there any progress there?
Well, they're waiting on their design. You know, I think you were there at that meeting when they explained to, you know, as far as the border and the additional 100 and, Felix, I think it was 130 parking lot, parking spaces they were going to pave. So I think they're still in a design mode on the improvements to the IP parking lot. Yeah. We met with Vincent Schwartz.
Yeah. And he's right now, he's getting ready to start doing all the trimming around that to try to curb the dust. He has some stuff that they're going to put on there to kind of keep the dust down. And, and we have a meeting set up with him coming up soon where we can go ahead.
Go over the details of the landscaping plan as well as the additional park closer to the casino.
Thank you. The other item is the Parks and Recreation Commission. We'd talked about that. Can we, when can we look towards reconstituting that commission? And moving forward, I'd hope maybe we could get representatives appointed to that commission. And be up and going in March. If any reason we couldn't do that, that gives us several months here to.
Yeah, I'll circulate the memo about suggested changes. And we can put that out on the, the Sunday news letter, if you want to.
Well, thank you, Mr. Abay. I appreciate that. All right. There being no further comments, we'll move to.
Paul?
Yes. Yes.
I'd like to.
George?
Like a little follow-up question.
Go ahead.
On the Gov. course, they're going to clear the whole thing? You said they cleared some of it. So what, are they planning on clearing all of it? And that's how you move them out of there?
Actually, what they're doing to, this is to the west of Iris Street, where they did bushog all the homeless camps and so forth. There was a clearing of a path down there that the PD was able to get to. That's what's either going or finishing up. But we're studying a couple of options, including CSX with the area between edge of their right-of-way and what's left to the north. So we're still studying it.
So what does that, has anything to do with clearing the property? I mean, the railroad road, you've got 60 feet on.
Well, some of that's on CSX right-of-way. Some of the wooded area.
Yeah, 60 feet belongs to the railroad.
75 feet from the center line of the thing. But, you know, and we're still in the process of doing what we can do there.
But I mean, I just figure if they're going to cut that, they need to clear cut it all, you know? To make sure it's done. That's what's holding them in there. They want to sleep under the trees and in bushes. So it's just something we got to work on, to me. And the last I didn't bring up, it was my fault, on the audit. Where are we at the audit? We're supposed to be getting.
Finishing it up right now.
So we're.
For the whole of this month, by the end of the month.
All right. And then on Kennedy Ward, do you have to-go? Stop by and pick up the pusherada to-go?
Wrap them up, ziplock.
I can honor a couple of special requests. I said thank you.
All right. You sure? Okay.
No, not sure, but it's all right.
All right. That brings us to citizens' comments. We'll set aside up to 45 minutes. And anyone who wishes to speak, just I'll recognize you. If you'll come to the table, take a moment, if you've not already signed in, to sign in with your name and address. Come in, sit down. You'll need to sit close to the mic so everybody can hear you. And then be sure to state your name and address so the clerk can get you on the record.
Carrie, you ready with the bell?
When your three minutes are up, you'll hear. There you go. All right. With that being said, is there anybody on my left, your right? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I haven't seen you in a while.
No. Hello, everybody. I guess you're wondering what I'm doing crossing county lines. I did not vote for any of you. Because I couldn't. But it's a privilege to be here today, to be heard. And I'm here on behalf of a coastwide celebration.
Yes, ma'am. If you would, your name and address, please.
All right. My name is Elaine Stevens. I live at 9229 Cartwright Lane in Biloxi, Mississippi. 39532 zip code. I live in Jackson County with the same zip code as Sunkist. So I don't know how that happened, but it happened. So there. But I am privileged to be here because to be heard by the people we put in office is a privilege that some people don't have. And I'm here to represent a group of citizens in a united front, not on either side. One that celebrates one of the most prestigious historic figures in the world, Martin Luther King. Martin Luther King, yes. And unfortunately, there seems to be some divide in how it's being managed and some monies that are being exchanged and changed over to the Parks and Recreation, pardon me. But I do believe that in that divisiveness itself, we destroyed the spirit of the celebration because we're celebrating a man who brought people together. And I think it is Biloxi's opportunity to be the unifier on this, on this coast, to bring people together without separating it and giving it to one specific individual. The people who put you there are the people who want to be involved in this celebration. There's an historic background involved in doing this. There are many people that have blood-related issues from the initial celebration that went back some 30 years. They should be able to participate, as do the people who are willing to participate. So there's a way to compromise. Within that compromise, something may have to be given up. But as Martin Luther King did say, what affects one person affects us all indirectly. What affects one directly affects us all indirectly. Let Biloxi become the unifying image of coming together on what Angie or whoever else is represented here today to bring people together. Ms. Yula Crowell, all the parties that are involved can come together. I will be a part of that. There is nothing more beautiful than collaboration. There is nothing more fulfilling than compromise. We can do this. I know we can. It should not be in the hands of one parochial ward or one situation. You want the people to speak at the polls, let them speak about this. Do not single out this event as one that gets relegated to Parks and Recreation when there are numerous parades throughout this city that are not being forced to do exactly the same thing. Let's look at the broader picture. It is not just Biloxi, it's the coast.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Is there anybody on my right, your left, that wishes to address the council? Anybody on this side of the room? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name's Donovan Scruggs at 317 Pine Drive in Ocean Springs. The first reading of that ordinance, which failed to obtain a second. And I'm kind of in a, unsure of what the, the next step is. I talked to staff, and it appears that the next approach would, is out of our, it's out of the city's hands, that it's procedurally dead or has not been approved. And I'm just trying to find some direction because this is not exactly something that has happened on a routine basis with the city. And we just need some guidance from the council, if at all possible.
Not a Q and A.
Yeah. Mr. Creel, you don't need to say anything. Mr. Scruggs has spoken with you on this. Okay. I'm happy to speak with you after the meeting or later today or tomorrow. I can give you my opinion if you like, Mr. Scruggs.
I'll weigh in, too, that Ms. Myers is represented by council. And they filed a bill of exceptions last week, taking the matter to circuit court. So that's really where it is at this point.
All right. And in that instance, it's best to let the attorneys deal with this, correct?
I think once they file the bill of exceptions, the council loses jurisdiction.
Got you. Okay. Mr. Scruggs, if there are any questions, be sure to see Mr. Abay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Is anybody on my left, your right? Mr. Fusco?
Good evening, City Council. I'm Jared Fusco from 435 Cove Drive. On March 7th, a developer went to the Planning Commission for a rezoning request. During the meeting, the developer presented a plan to build 42 to 47 homes on the property with a statement that, quote, "47 units would be the max," unquote. Although there were many live oaks on the property, he agreed not to return to the Planning Commission to ask to remove any of them. All of this information was provided to the City Council, who unanimously approved the rezoning based upon these facts and others. On July 25th, this developer submitted a tree permit application to remove eight live oak trees from the now rezoned property. Over the next three weeks, the request increased to 12 live oak trees in order to construct 53 homes. Five homes more than the maximum that was stated just four months earlier. The Tree Committee and the Planning Commission were both informed of these facts, but decided to approve the tree permit anyway in order to allow five more 480-square-foot cottages at the cost of 12 trees. Ordinance 23-9682 states that the city may revoke any development approval when false statements or misrepresentations were made in securing the approval. In this case, City Council approved the zoning amendment based upon false statements. City Council cannot go back and ask itself if it would or would not have voted differently had these statements not been made. A champagne cork cannot go back into its bottle. By now, you may be asking yourselves, who is it that deceived us? The answer to that question is the developer for the cottages at Moffett Road Project, which you have a tree permit appeal to decide on today. Mr. Mayor, I feel obliged to bring something to your attention. On 1 November, an email was sent by Mr. Jerry Creel to a federal employee asking that he identify my employment status and my immediate supervisor. In the email, he claimed he was acting on your behalf. This email, coming from the Community Development Director just four days before my tree permit appeal hearing, strongly appears as an effort to intimidate me. If this request was not from you, I am always available to discuss anything with you directly at any time, Mr. Mayor. But if it wasn't, I humbly request that you inform Mr. Creel that his service to Biloxi citizens is no longer required. Clerk of City Council, please enter this speech into the record, the aforementioned email, and other attachments that I provided you and the rest of City Council. Thank you for your time, as always.
Thank you, Mr. Fusco. Mr. Crowell, I think you were next.
Yes, my name is James Crowell. I live at 681 Chambers Cove, Biloxi. I'm here to speak against the resolution to move the Martin Luther King's funding to the, to the Biloxi Recreation and Parks Department. I was chairman of the Coastwide Celebration, Martin Luther King Celebration, for several years. And while I was chairman, there was always something coming from the city against the program. We named it the All-American Day instead of Martin, and it was nationally known as Martin Luther King Day. And the other thing, we have organizations, y'all had a council meeting where a golf tournament was, was supposed to be funded by the council. And they went to pump, to. And they went to funk, defunct, and they were not going to be there. And they were not going to use the ten thousand dollars, I think. But the guys, the Ward Two councilmen, had put in a resolution to take that money and use it for the Martin Luther King Celebration. But then another councilman came up and said, "No, let's not do that. Why don't we take the Martin Luther King money and give it to this other organization?" You know, so we've always had problems trying to... And we've had bands coming here, mainly Jackson State, Alcorn, and Valley, for the parade. And it takes money to bring them down here. I mean, when I was chair, it took about thirty, forty thousand dollars to pay for those buses, for those people to come. I'm pretty sure the other people that have a function like that, they also have those expenses. Now, y'all don't give the money for the Mardi Gras and for the St. Patrick's Day Parade and all the other folks to Recreation Department and let them get the money from them. So why should you take the Martin Luther King money and do it that way? We need to be fair about this. And we're only talking about ten thousand dollars, of which probably it's a lot less than these other groups get. So we need to leave that money where it is for the funding for the MLK Celebration. We shouldn't change that. Because we got one last year, we didn't have it. A lot of people were disappointed because the committee that was supposed to be handling it at that time didn't do anything and didn't tell nobody. So my wife, this year, decided to get the community together and work on it. And they are working on it, they've gotten ballot state to agree to come. And they got several others, they got a bank account, they've gotten a tax ID number, they've gotten all the stuff that's needed for the organization. So we should allow them to...
Thank you, Mr. Crowell. Appreciate your comments. Is there anybody on my right, your left? Yes ma'am.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
McCall, I live at 13163 Quarry Lane in Biloxi. Mr. Shoemaker's Ward Seven. So pretty much everything has been said that I can echo on that. We do not agree to have those funds moved. I moved here in 2018 from Dallas, Texas. I'm a retired military of thirty years. And I would like to say that one of the things that I enjoy, among the other things, is the celebration of MLK Day. It's a part of our heritage, a part of our history. So I'm here to advocate that we... Why try to fix what's not broken? Leave it as is. And I just want my voice to be heard, Mr. Shoemaker, from Ward Seven, that I agree with everything that's been said in regards to MLK. Leave those funds where they are. We're working out there hard to bring a celebration that all of us can enjoy. So why are we making changes to just this particular celebration? Or you all making changes to other entities? So that's my question. Answer that question for me. So I just implore that you all just leave things the way they are. When you know, you know, we know the real reason. So we're just asking that we leave the funds where they are because we're going to do the right thing. And I'm speaking on behalf of where I live, Ward Seven, and a lot of the people that I've talked to in our neighborhood. We would like to keep those funds where they are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCall. Is there anybody on my left, your right? Yes ma'am.
If I can do this in three minutes with him. I am getting on the record that I am against the issuance of a tree permit.
State your name and address please, that's all right.
Elizabeth Desport, 1143 Lafayette. The permit in question is to remove twelve large oak trees and replace them with twenty-four others. And we know you're going to plant them two feet apart and they're not going to last. You know that. What happens to the ground after a large tree, or any tree for that matter, comes up and is removed? There are still roots left underground and the soil begins to lack the proper nutrients that new trees need to replace the old ones. We all know that cutting down trees causes erosion, climate change, flooding, and increased greenhouse gases in the atmosphere. But did you also know that it causes droughts? Just one oak tree, just one, is home to four thousand species of the local ecosystem that we rely on. They use trees as shelter, food sources for squirrels, owls, rats, and songbirds. Without them, the ecosystem becomes imbalanced, animals become displaced, and an increased risk of diseases spread through humans. But hey, guess what? We'll still have fifty-three four-hundred-and-eighty-square-foot rental units. But who pays the price? These are cut down. How many more will be cut down for the next project and the next project and the next? This seems unethical to me. All the way around, trees are life forms. Did you also know that trees have a soul? They'll be resurrected one day also. They take decades and even centuries to reach full maturity and contribute to a high quality of living. I'm asking that the council will vote against this travesty before it gets out of hand. No money is worth our precious trees and land for they are literally the breath of life. I'm not sure if he'll let you hear him now, but he has been practicing this. Please, what does an owl say? What does a bird say? What does a bird say? What does a eagle do? And what does trees do? They stand tall for centuries on end and for generations to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Desport. Is there anybody on my right, your left, that wishes to address the council? Yes ma'am.
My name is Pastor Sheila McIntyre. I live at 515 Esther Boulevard, Ward Number Seven. I'm addressing to Mayor. We come not with no division, no confusion, or anything like that concerning about the MLK. I am on the board of the MLK. We've been working there since January, getting this program together and everything. We see that we study coming up against option after option. We not here today to... Not working in unity no longer. Everybody's one against this money. Last year, she know I came last year about we didn't get the ten thousand dollars. That's why they didn't have the MLK. And the people was calling me like, "What's going on?" Because I was part of the NWA CP. "What's going on? Why the park law? Why we not able to do this for the MLK? Why wasn't no parade? Why not..." They asking us. We had no answer because one of the council stopped the money. We just want our money back in the organization that was due to us. This been like this for years and years. Ten thousand dollars was always set aside for the MLK. But if it's another board, let us know. Because we are board, if we can't have two boards, we can't have two heads working together. We can work together, but divided, we can't work together. So my question is, they said we not going to have a band. We going to have a band if we have to go out and hustle, sell, play, whatever. We going to bring the thing back to the people. Last year, we didn't have anything. And we were the only state that did not represent MLK. That was a sad day. So I'm standing on the part of the MLK meeting that I'm, you know, part of, asking you all, "Let's work together. Put our difference aside, our attitude." What person want to have power over everything? No, if you working as a council, you working for the people, not just for yourself. We work together. Everybody want to, like they want to be at top. You the armarella, you hold the armarella. They work under you. But somewhere that the armarella cannot close, because you closing them in, why we can't just work together? We moving the money to the park, the park lady saying this and that person saying that. Then we had the council going around, "Oh, it ain't going to be like this, it ain't going to be like that." You one person. This meeting is for everybody. Let's work together. And that's all I have to say. Let's work together, put our difference aside. I'm not mad at nobody. I love everybody. We all going to stand before God, all the other thing you doing wrong, got to be accounted for, amen? So let's work together.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre. Anybody on my left? Anybody on my left, your right? The gentleman just stood up. We'll get to everybody today.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jeremy McCarty. My address is 317 Nixon Street. Hey Chief, it's good to see you. So the reason that's really, really, I love my chief, but why we're here is a very serious topic. Martin Luther King was a great man. Martin Luther King, he did so much for many. He said, "I have a dream that one day, white kids and black kids..." It's not about the color, it's not about the content of the color of your skin, but it's about the content of your character. And that Martin Luther King Parade at Biloxi, it holds so much significance. And I'm telling you, last year when they did not have that parade, it brought tears to my eyes. Because I said, "This has never happened in the history of Biloxi." You see what I'm saying? It was a very hurtful thing. So I'm here to say, keep the funds where they ought to. Like I said, I love Mardi Gras. Biloxi is infamous for Mardi Gras. Infamous, we got a big Mardi Gras, big St. Patrick's Day Parade. Let's keep the parade with, everybody loves to party on Mardi Gras. St. Patrick is Catholic. But what I'm saying, Dr. Martin Luther King is Dr. Martin Luther King. Let's keep Dr. Martin Luther King funding where his funding is. Because it's all about equality, it's all about unity, it's all about staying together. And it's just sad because the people of Ward Two just can't... It's pitiful when leadership cannot come together with the people. When you are a public servant, you work for the people. You are working for the people. You don't work against the people, you work for the people and with the people. And when you see that you're no longer able to work with the people or communicate or get along with the people, I feel like just do the public a service and step aside and step down. Because the people are not being worked with. We're tired of being overlooked in Ward Two. We're tired of being the bottom of the barrel. That's right. Because the things that going in Ward Two, you would never, you would have a nightmare. Just like with the Black Spring break issue. They set it off. They said, because you know why? It's affluency, money, and you know what, it's just sad to say, but it's about skin color. So let Ward Two be treated like Ward One, Ward Three, Ward Four. I know you good, Chief, you good with me. Ward Five and Ward Six and Ward Seven. Stop putting Ward Two at the bottom of the barrel. Let's get some real leadership in Ward Two. And let's get this parade back jumping, back home, back to Biloxi, where everything started. We going to finish it right here in Biloxi, in Jesus's name. But that parade is going down, come hell or high water. It's happening.
Thank you, Mr. McCarty. Is there anybody else on my right, your left? Yes ma'am. I haven't seen you in awhile. Sabrina, how are you?
All right. My name is Sabrina May, as we all know. Well, I come here to say this. I've been asking for fundings for Parks and Recreation Center for years. I've been coming right here steadily asking about this and asking about that. Now, it's all of a sudden, I have funny. Now, they want to give funds up for the Martin Luther King and we got to make a decision. I mean, Second Ward, it's rough. It's rough everywhere, you know? And we got to deal with what we got to deal with. Everybody got a position. And I stated this one time. Everybody got a position. Like you the councilman, that's the mayor, that's the chief. I'm discreet. I'm Second Ward, whether you like it or not, I'm Second Ward. You know, it don't make sense. And we trying our best. I do everything I could possibly do. I don't see nobody coming in our ward, doing nothing in our ward. Nobody's, we don't even look for it no more. But to take this parade for us, it's such embarrassment. It just really don't make no sense, you know what I'm saying? We got Martin Luther King, he had a dream, we going to keep it alive. So just like I say, whatever, we got any means necessary. However, we got to get the money, we going to get the money. But we should never have to come to this conclusion when it come to us and doing some event for us. It shouldn't be this way. So all we asking is, y'all keep the money where the money go. Give us a chance to prove ourselves that we can get together, we can come along, we can do what we need to be done, and let that be done. And let God do his works because this is unacceptable. So, you know, we asking for the money, we asking, we praying y'all keep the money where it is. But if we don't get the money this way, we going to get it by any means necessary. And have a great day.
Thank you, Ms. May. Is anybody else on my left, your right? Yes ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Phyllis Bullock. My address is 317 Nixon Street. And I am a citizen of Ward Two. What I don't understand is how we get to this point. So we don't need to continue to tear down, but to build up. And so we know that Martin Luther King, the Martin Luther King Holiday, it not just represent just that one day. But Martin Luther King represents three-hundred-and-sixty-five days in a year. And so we don't want to forget about all of the struggles and his legacy and everything that he marched for, not only him, but other people that marched with him. And so we ought to take that mantle and we ought to keep going. And we ought to do it together and not divided. And it's just sad to see us to be at this point. I just never thought it's enough going on in our ward alone than to have to be coming to a city council meeting about something so important as Martin Luther King Holiday. So I say to you all, let's not tear each other down. We cannot continue to do this. It's not a part of what the Lord stand for. His judgment is going to always be for righteousness and justice, not just for some people, but for all people. And that's what we need to stand for. Not for just some, but all, and what's right and not what's wrong. But we need to get this thing right today. And I'm hoping, before we walk out of here, that we come together on one accord and that we have a yes answer to that ten thousand dollars for this Martin Luther King Day Parade. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bullock. Is there anybody else on my right, your left? Yes sir, Mr. Carney.
The City Council and the mayor, and all those are present.
The city councilman, the mayor, and all those are present.
Good evening.
I, I just want to say, after hearing all the comments over the last several years, and the agenda, I have been brought to you. Phil, let's just say.
Thank you, Mr. Carney. Anybody on my left, your right wish to speak? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Lally. Thank you, Ms. Lally. Anybody on my right, your left wish to address the council? There's nobody on my left, your right. Okay, anybody on my left? Excuse me, anybody on my left, your right wish to address the council? There's nobody else on this side of the room. Anybody on the back? Nobody in the back? Good, then this will conclude citizens' comments. And we'll move to the next order of business, which is a first reading. If the clerk would read that ordinance, please.
Ordinance to amend Chapter Two pertaining to municipal facilities.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it, just get it on the floor.
I'll second.
There's a motion by Mr. Guines for purposes of discussion. Again, this is a first reading, and a second by Mr. Glavine. All right, that brings us to Item B. These are all second readings, so we expect to vote on these. We'll see. The clerk would read Item B, please.
Ordinance to amend the land development ordinance to designate 856 Division Street as a city of Biloxi landmark.
That motion was made by Mr. Guines, and it was seconded by Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Guines?
Yeah, that's the old banks and paint store. The old company there, Elijah Mitchell, which is heading up Seashore Mission. I have no problem with that in the community.
All right, Mr. Lawrence?
Enough said.
Enough said. And I believe this was known for many years as Si's place. And the Simon family, a lot of entertainers came through the coast there at that location. George, you probably spent a few hours dancing in there. That's just a guess. All right, so we've got a motion and a second. Are there any more comments? Is there any more discussion there? Being none, all in favor of the ordinance? Excuse me, all, all in favor of the ordinance recognizing this is a city of Biloxi landmark? Raise your hand, that's approved on a 7-0 vote, thank you. If the clerk would read Item C.
Orders to grant a zoning map amendment for PDI planned development and field district master plan for 458 Back Bay Boulevard.
Thank you. The motion was by Mr. Lawrence, and a second by Mr. Guines. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I know the man built sheds out there for the boats. The PDI doesn't fit sheds. PDI is for homes and over Biloxi. That's what was passed by. Develop homes on small lots in over Biloxi. What we doing here is building sheds to store boats. Have no problem with that? He wants to build all the sheds he wants, store all the boats he wants. But we're not going to subdivide sheds and call it anything but sheds. You can't do that. The PDI was homes. You're in a velocity zone, you can't hardly even build homes right there. You can't build man cave. To me, I recommend that we just let him stay building the sheds, rent them, and not add the PDI to this resolution.
Mr. Guines?
Yeah. Mr. Creel, give us a little information on that.
Okay. The PD is allowed to, to, allows mixed-use development. And the reason that he's requesting the PDI on this, all it does is make the difference between whether or not he can sell the units or have to rent the units. That's the only difference in it. If he were just gonna rent it, it could stay as it is. But what they want to do is they want to sell these individual units to people to store their vehicles in. This is the first case we've had like this. But it's actually being done almost like a condo situation. A condo for RV and boat storage, where somebody would buy the individual unit, and then the property owners association would be responsible for maintaining it.
Would they be able to live in it?
No, won't be anybody living in it.
My question is, you can't call them condos. They're not condos, they're sheds. You put boats in them. And you can't tie that in, the PDI was built, was put on the books for homes to be built on small land in over Biloxi. That's exactly what the law says. Nothing about a garage, nothing about a boat shed, nothing about any of that. And to separate those, that is not according to the regulations of the city. It's not condos, it's not homes, not man cave. It's not no thing, it's a shed to store. Have no problem with that? You can rent all the ones he wants. My thing is, you can't put the PDI into that and use it as a condo, or house, or home, or anything else. They sheds, to store boats in.
I, I tried to make it clear, but let me explain it again. The reason I use the term condo is because when you're doing a condo, each individual, each individual unit has its own legal description. And that is similar to a condo form. That's the way condos work, is that each individual unit, even if it's in a multifamily building, has its own legal description. So that when you buy that condo, you're buying whatever is within that legal description. But there's, I mean, there's nothing offensive about this. The, the boat storage can be built there regardless. That's how they got the permit to go ahead and build it. And all this PDI does, again, is allow them to sell them instead of just rent them. That's it.
Yeah, I had no problem with him building them. Building it according to the waterfront, let him rent them. That's what he started off to do the first time. So let's stay with that. Don't be tying in a PDI to this. By anytime we use the PDI, it was all about homes. Never been about mixed-use sheds to rent for boats.
Mr. Lawrence, can I ask you a question? So I'm, I'm listening to you, and I, all respect of where this is located. So if they would rent this, you would be okay? But, but because they're calling it a condo, you're, you're having an issue with it? Is that what I'm hearing here? If they would just rent it, you'd be okay with it?
I would, he has the right to do that. On that property, on the waterfront property, he has the right to do that.
Understood. So the, the interpretation of a condo, if it had a different word, but it allowed them to sell the unit and keep a boat in there, or some kind of property, you would be okay with that? You just have a problem with it being called condo?
No.
Okay, I'm, that's what I'm trying to understand.
You can't separate sheds. It's not homes. He's only doing it so now he wants to sell them. He didn't want to sell them to Saltway. So he was building them, no, I had a problem with that. He changed his mind later. And we're very tired of people changing their minds, so I'm gonna do this now. It does not fit in waterfront property.
Mr. Carter is here, if you would like to hear from him, so.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I know it wasn't my time. I just had a question as you were creating that dialogue. I'm good.
All right, anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
You want him to speak?
It's, Mr. Guines has the floor, I believe.
That's, yeah, that, that's up to us when we get to you. If you'd like to have Mr. Carter up, when, when we get to you for comments, you can call Mr. Carter up.
Yeah, let him come up.
Mr. Guines has the floor.
Did you call him up?
Yeah, I did.
You want to call him, come, come on up.
There you go.
Good evening. Nick Gant, Brown Mitchell &amp; Alexander, 131 Rue Magnolia here in Biloxi. Authorized agent and applicant on behalf of Stephen Carter, Gutierrez LLC. And he's right here. When we, he originally approached me and the contractor about this plan, what he is proposing and what he is currently constructing is allowed in the waterfront. The only difference is how it would be operated. As is, as Mr. Creel said, can be rented as RV and boat storage units. There are instances, I guess, all over the U.S. I know there are some in Orange Beach Gulf Shores where this kind of exists, where you purchase the individual units instead of rent or lease them. So, when we wanted to move forward with, the, the owner wanted to move forward with selling instead of renting, we contacted staff. They said, "This is the way to do it." So this is why we kind of come this way in order to be able to sell these. Very similar, as he mentioned, to, you know, a condo plat. Where a condo plat, what you do is each individual unit has its own legal description. Instead of abutting public frontage, it abuts what I'll call, for this instance, a POA, a property owners association. And they will be responsible for, excuse me, for maintaining those areas. So any questions you may have, I'll...
So why did you change the, sell them instead of rent them? Say money, not maintaining the property?
So, the plan always from the beginning was to do it this way. Once, you know, we kind of made that known to staff. They said, "Hey, you got to go about it this way in order to do that." Because there was no change from the waterfront district in order to do the original use. And what I'll say, what was constructed, we were able to move forward with construction. As we were going through the DRC process, that's when we kind of found out this is what we needed to do. And so we initiated that process.
So you was always gonna sell them?
That was always the intent.
So you had, you put it in the wrong place, because you couldn't do it in the waterfront property? You could rent them, but you couldn't sell them?
Correct.
Okay. So now you want, after you built them, now you wanted to change again the PDI so you can rent them and sell them also?
Well, not rent, they will all be sold, yes.
They'll all be sold.
Yes, and that was always the plan. As we went through DRC, that is when they let us know we needed to go through the PDI in order to do it this way. So that's when we moved forward with our PDI application, and preliminary plat application for the condo plat.
To me, that makes it worse. Because that's where we had this problem with two or three other developers. Come in and build one thing, then change it, build it again, change it, change it. I said, "That's my problem." I mean, these things are not condos, they boat sheds. And that's all they are. And you can't do anything else with them. You're in a high-velocity zone anyway. For insurance, it's probably tough enough as it is. So I just can't see changing it again, because y'all wouldn't. All I need to know for someone, when somebody saw it, once they just flat tell them, "We're gonna build these to sell them." And then you should have started from the beginning. This is the third product in the last year that we changed after somebody built them. You know, and I'm not rewarding anybody for doing something wrong. I mean, I've never ever heard it. Y'all was planning on selling them from the beginning. There were no burners, had no problem with that. That's allowed in the waterfront. So I have a problem putting the PDI, stuck with it. Because to me, those are homes. The PDI is I'm talking about. And that's not homes, those are boat sheds.
So I'll say, you know, that is not a high-velocity zone. It is a, it is in a flood zone, that is correct. But, but not a V-zone. So it is being constructed in a, in a, in a flood zone, elevation 17, I believe. Or 15. So what we are doing, as I mentioned, the word condo, the intent is not to put houses in them and people live in them. That's not the intent. In order to sell the individual units, that's the process that was, you know, told by, to us by the city that we had to go through in order to sell it. This is the process to sell the individual units. And that was kind of always the business model. You know, it was mentioned in DRC, and that's kind of how that kind of started going about doing this application.
I just have a major problem with the change. Building them, renting them, had no problem. Thought that was a pretty neat idea right there. It's pretty low, you know? Pretty much sitting on the backside of the street with the swamps and that. But y'all, y'all did fill that in and bring them up a little bit. But I just don't like the idea of calling them condos or putting them as a home. They're not, they're sheds. And we don't subdivide sheds in the city of Biloxi. And the PDI don't give you the right to do that. So that's why I'm really against the PDI. Y'all renting them, I have no problem with that. Think that's good. But y'all built back there, looked pretty nice. So, I don't have no problem with that. But me, as a Ward One Councilman, I just take a substance to changing again in middle stream, you know, we're gonna do something different. That's, I'm getting tired of, that's happening in the city of Biloxi too much. Not just, just one of you, she's just another one that done it. So I had the same problem with the last two or three thing that we passed. It was actually passed wrong. Same thing, they built them, then we changed it. I don't like that. I don't have a problem with y'all renting them. I'm not for the PDI at all. I don't think that's the right thing to do in the city of Biloxi. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Guines, comment?
I don't have any comments.
Ms. Newman, anything? Mr. McGilvery?
Yeah.
Glavine?
I do. And all, again, due respect to the councilmen in this ward. You're not going to have anybody living, you're not gonna change it after you go through this and start selling these units. They're not gonna be converted into living quarters. And there's no mechanism for that to, to happen. Am I correct in saying that, Mr. Creel? They couldn't change it into being living quarters for a condo, as we know it? Yeah. So, so the question is, you, your intent to develop this property has always been to build storage for boat storage or whatever's gonna be stored in here. Whether it was renting, which is not an option, but in order to sell it, it has to go through the PDI to get that designation to be exactly used for the intent that you always had had, which is to build boat storage. And to stop this would have economic repercussions for you, but also have economic repercussions from the city, because now this building is just gonna sit in limbo, and it's a lose-lose situation for everyone. And that, that's why I wanted to clarify what the councilman was, was thinking of, you know, the condo, did he think it was gonna be lived in? Or he just had a problem with the change? Because the use is gonna be used whether you sell it or rent it. So I'm, I'm gonna have to support you, because it's a win-win versus a lose-lose if we go the other route. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker.
Just a quick question. The, the upkeep, the maintenance on it, I think you said, would be done by the POA?
Correct.
Or P, like the homeowners association, basically?
Basically HOA, but, you know, it's a POA, so it'll be a property owners association. So the individual units that are owned by individuals will have a POA fee that they pay that will be used to take care, maintenance, the common areas.
Just like an HOA for a condo?
Correct.
Okay. And mainly boats, RVs, campers, trailers, things like that?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. I guess the thing that bothers me, I'm, I'm with Mr. Lawrence on this. And, and I've changed my position since I first sat down here. But I'm, I'm very sympathetic, because this is about the third or fourth project. The first like this, where we've had what were going to be townhomes, then go the PDI route. And... And, thank you, Mr. Gant, Mr. Creel. And, and I, I think Mr. Lawrence's point is we're doing an end run, really, to get, to get where we're not allowed to be originally. And just, from listening, wait just a moment, Mr. Creel. So the PDI, planned development infill, infill, as, as you had stated before, really was designed for East Biloxi where you have small parcels and you're trying to get some, some residential construction going. Mixed use perhaps, because in old, old Biloxi, small lots, you had mixed use with residential above and commercial downstairs, mom and pop stores, that kind of thing. And, and that's what concerns me is, is that, and I have no problem for exactly the same reason, Mr. Lawrence said renting them, fine. If it was zoned appropriately from the get-go, for you to sell those, we wouldn't be here today. But it just seems like we're, we're going through this gyration here, going the PDI route as we've done for Monarch Villas and Carl Breeze. And this council was split on that. They were approved. But it just, why can't you, you come to us? The council does, I think, and the Planning Commission does what they're supposed to do. And then there's a change of plans. And typically, what's mentioned is, well, the market changed. And in this case, it wasn't the market changed, it was just, here's, we can't get from point A to point B this way, but we can get from point A to point B if we go the PDI route. I don't know that it's that Machiavellian, but I kind of think it is. But go ahead, I'll be quiet and listen, Mr. Creel.
All right. Number one, there was no change in this project. From day one, they came in and they told us that they wanted to sell these units. That's the way that it was presented at DRC. That's the way it went through Planning Commission, advertised. That's the way it was heard at Planning Commission. There was never any request for these to be townhomes. So that, you know, there was no change in the process. The reason that they went ahead and started building is because their contractor was available at the time. And the waterfront zoning allowed them to build boat and RV storage area as a use by right. The plan was always to sell these units. Now, the, the lowest zoning, the lowest lot size that we have in waterfront zoning would be probably a hundred feet wide by a hundred feet deep, you know? So to get to these individual lot sizes, we'll call them lot sizes because I didn't realize the condo term was going to cause such controversy. But to get to these individual unit sizes, let's call it that, they had to have the PDI in order to do that. So we advised them right from the beginning, you know, the PDI is allowed on the peninsula in Biloxi. This is a perfect kind of project for a PDI. And, you know, you're wanting to sell the units. But there was never any change to it. Every step of the way, this has been the plan, is to sell the units. And it came in as a, a request came in as a PDI, and it's being presented to you as a PDI.
But there was never anything different. How, how come nobody knew about that on the council?
Well, there are obviously...
Obviously, nobody told us that. Nobody even brought that to us to say that it was never ever, they built something they weren't going to use the way they was building it.
Okay.
So that's not right for them to be doing that either, Jerry?
This is the reason...
Okay, if this passes, say it don't pass. Are y'all going to still rent them? What are you going to do with them? Right. So it's not a win-win, lose-lose, like Kenny said. Because if this don't pass, they'll, they'll rent them. And they'll probably take care of them, and probably do a good job doing that. I don't like the thing we put before is late, and we changed them once again. And the PDI does not fit this project that's sheds. It does not. There's no way in the states that you can subdivide sheds.
Let me, let me answer that, that question. This project wasn't just, you're not being blindsided by this project. It went through the DRC. There was a public hearing held before the Planning Commission. It was advertised. Notices were sent out to everybody within 200 feet of the property. We post advertisements at City Hall. We post advertisements in the newspaper. This is not anything being done in secret. People came in for the, the public hearing. There were questions asked and everything else. Mr. Gant got up, made his presentation. So unless you're not reading the Planning Commission packets, then I, I don't know how else to, to get the information to you. That's the whole purpose of the public hearing, is for us to follow the steps. So we've done everything that we were supposed to do to make this as public as the ordinance requires it to be.
The Planning Commission is the last step before us, Jerry. That not do all the other stuff you said. Planning Commission, that's, we get those reports. And I'm saying, well, it started off, it was never going to be rented. I mean, when you, to me, I don't know how you allowed them to build something just in case it doesn't pass for, for them people. They're going to rent them, fine. I had no problem, like I said. I think that's a great thing. But for us to change this, to sell them and subdivide sheds, that is absolutely wrong in LDO of the city of Biloxi.
When somebody comes in and asked to go ahead and start building something, and their contractor's available, and the zoning on the property allows what they're asking for, and they're going to be asking for a PD, a, so I make them aware, you may or may not get the approval, and these guys will tell you, I told them at the DRC meeting, you may or may not get the approval you're asking for. If you don't get the approval, then you're in the rental business. But the zoning on the property allowed them to go ahead and build the boat and RV storage regardless. So there was no reason to hold the permit up for that. It was just a question of whether or not this is going to be approved today, so.
Like I tell you, nobody had a problem with them building, they're going to rent them. Like I said, that is used by rights and waterfront. That's not a prob, that's not the problem. That's not the issue. The issue here, we were changing again. And the PDI does not fit this project, period.
We never, never, we never changed anything in this project. We always came. It's a new concept. It's hard to find a zoning that has this in any city that you go to, but you can go to... They're all over, like in the Dallas and Arizona and California and South Florida. They just hadn't gotten here yet. And it's a, a unique concept where you own your place and you put all your stuff in it, and it turns out to be, we're bringing people that need to come to that part of Biloxi to, to hang out and see. If you don't come there, you don't look at the drone footage of what we've done, you think it's a blighted area, but it's not. It's a beautiful area. And we're bringing, we're bringing a project that is going to enhance the whole area back there. We've never said that, we've, from the day one, it's always been called Bayside Luxury Garage Condominiums. It's never been anything ever, and I guess nobody really understood it as they went through. And so by the time we get into all this, they're like, I think we're going to have to make this a planned unit development in order to sell them or whatever. And we're like, well, you know, then that's what we need to do because that's what we've said from, from the day one. Never have we changed anything ever in this project. And it needs, something needs to happen back there. There's nothing going on back there. This project is a major event that's happening on Back Bay Boulevard that we're the first address that's ever been on there. There's no other address on there. We donated the prop, we donated the right of way when, when the Strangie family owned that property and the Chris Farrar owned it. I was in control of it one time. I made him donate that property to the city of Biloxi to build Back Bay Boulevard to get the loop going around through there. Now we're back putting millions of dollars into this project. And all we want to do is sell the units because that's, that's what makes the business model work. It's going to make, it's going to make pride of ownership there. It's not going to be like an, an old rental place. It's going to be decent. If you own a couple hundred thousand dollar boat or a couple hundred thousand dollar RV, you're going to be there to take care of it. And you're going to see what's, what's going on around this part of Biloxi. There's going to be more development that's going to happen because we're a catalyst that's making this happen. And all we need is to be able to sell them.
How many have you built so far?
Twenty-seven.
Is that it? Or you're building more than that?
Well, as we sell them, and we've had 400 inquiries over those, for those 27. And then there's the second, the second part of it, we have 36 more, total of 63.
If this fails, would you build more and rent them?
I've, no. If this fails, I, I don't know. We might, I don't know what we're going to do. I don't know. It's, it's going to really hinder the business model of the whole thing. Because what we wanted to do was across the street, we wanted to put like a, it's only, it's not that big an area, but we can put a small RV park, a very upscale, nice thing. And we have our application in to put in a, a small marina where you can put 10 boat slips. So you have your boat there. There's a great boat launch that's never used around the corner. Use that boat launch, bring your boat over. You have your RV, you take it out, you hang out. You know, it's, it's something that, that Biloxi's missing. And it's an opportunity for all of us, especially in that area.
Stephen, let me jump in just a little because you mentioned boat slip. And I know this is, this is a different approach to things. I think there's a little bit of one, similar thing in Ocean Springs. But when you mentioned boat slips, I noticed in South Florida, it's sort of an analogy, but you could buy your boat slip down there. And that's, we'll be faced with that at one point in time. If somebody wants to develop a marina and actually sell the slips. So we'll be faced with a similar situation at some point down the road. So I mean, it's different, and that's, you know, it's been done before successfully in Florida. And, and I think, again, they're doing it...
I used to have a boat slip in, in Orange Beach.
Yep.
If you had to buy it, it was part of the, an association. It was, you know, you had, when you have something like that, you have people that take care of things. You have people that, you know, you have an invested, I guess, real estate or whatever. I just don't even call it real estate. But it's, you, you will take care of your stuff if you own it. If you rent it, you're probably not going to take care of it. You're not really going to care. You're going to say, oh, I'm going to get my stuff and get out of here.
Right.
Through this place.
Oh, it's not been done before. I think that's the challenge.
It hasn't been done before. And it's, we're wanting and putting it in Biloxi, and it's...
Mr. Carter, y'all, you own to the bay?
Yeah.
There's eight acres, what you have right there?
Eight point three seven acres.
Mm-hmm. That's, I knew you'd, could y'all try to, or try to casino it and...
They know opportunities there. We, nothing will go back there. Nothing will go back there. Look, ask Chris Farrar. He couldn't put anything back there. He gave it to the Boys and Girls Club. I've talked to the Boys and Girls Club. I've had other developers that have come back there. I am probably one of the few people that are looking back there, that's trying to bring something back there, that's enhancing back there, that the city of Biloxi's put millions of dollars into that road, had to build it back a couple of times. When we donated the right of way, I calculated it, it was 3.11 acres. And at that time, it was like $2 million an acre because the casinos were going crazy. And so values was, so we donated almost $6 million worth of property to the city of Biloxi to build that road. And now we're here to put a multimillion dollar boat, RV, luxury storage area that's going to bring the kind of people that you want back there to spur more development. It's a win-win for the city of Biloxi. And renting them is not going to be, it's just not going to, it's just not going to be near as, near what, what it could be.
And I just, I don't think the PDI is the right approach, and maybe something else you could do.
There's another zoning classification.
No, there's, you can find all kinds of things, you know, you look enough, you'll find something. But I just don't think the PDI is the way to go. This is, that part there...
The homeowners association is going to be also watching this out too. We're not, nobody's living in there. We don't want you living in there.
Ah, you, you can't build that zone there. And insurance will be through the roof. You couldn't build nothing that'll live in it.
We wouldn't want that. That's all.
Go ahead. Any other comments?
I'd like to make a comment. I don't know how this is going to go, but just listening to you and, and your entrepreneur spirit and, and ingenuity is to be commended. This fits, like you said, with Biloxi. You've got boat storage, RV storage, and you've got property that you want to develop out that fits in this area. There hasn't been anything on that property for 100 years and, or more. And to, to invest millions in, in Biloxi, I hope we can support you. And if it doesn't go that way, I'm sure you're going to continue that entrepreneur spirit. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion, any other comments, there being none? We'll call for the question. All in favor of the ordinance to grant a zoning map amendment? Raise your right hand in support. All opposed? Mr. Lawrence? Mr. Lawrence in opposition. So it's, it passes on a six-one vote.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to item D. If the clerk would read item D, please.
Resolution to deny the appeal and affirm the decision of the Biloxi Planning Commission to remove 12 protected trees located at 308 and 309 Moffett Road.
All right, the motion was made by Mr. Lawrence and the second by Mr. McGilvery. Mr. Lawrence, comments?
I do, but if I did this, because Dixie had identity two weeks ago. So we honor that, but that's, I'm going to turn it over to Dixie because this is in her wall. And I'll go with my comments later.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you, George. I appreciate that. I wanted to make sure that I was here just in case because I didn't know how the vote was going to go. But I have not received any complaints at all regarding this project from my ward. We have received recommendation of approval of the project from the tree committee, all but two people. We have a tree committee filled with nothing but tree lovers for this reason. The developer, as I have been informed from the tree committee, that they're doing all they can to save all the trees. They're putting in the right pavement to save the trees. And they're going to be planting even more than there is required. So they're doing above and beyond what we all ask. So I look, I don't see any other reason to not approve this project. Thank you.
All right. Mr. McGilvery?
Just one comment, short comment. The tree committee chairwoman, Susan Peterson, reported to the planning commission that the committee voted two, correction, three to two in favor of this project. Additionally, Ms. Peterson announced that Dr. Rains will be replacing trees at a ratio of two to one. At the planning commission hearing, Ms. Campbell, a former member of the tree committee, stated that she appreciated the serious considerations given to tree conservation in this instance and fully supported the request. Director Creel was asked, the abundance of resident projects in Biloxi, were there abundance? And stated that they were not too many. Additionally, Director Creel related that Biloxi has not reached saturation and that affordable housing is needed in Biloxi, which we all know. Director Creel also noticed, noted, homes are frequently sold while under construction and builders and developers are still applying for building permits. During the hearing, several citizens voiced the opposition to the approval. The planning commission posed numerous questions after extensive discussions regarding the project. And after much deliberation, anonymously voted four-zero in favor of this application. Conclusion, the tree committee voted three to two in favor of removing the trees. And the planning commission approved the project with 14-zero vote. Based on what I heard, what I have read and observed, Dr. Rains has gone to great lengths to save as many protected trees as possible he can. Additionally, he will be replacing the removed trees at a ratio of two to one. I fully support the project and will be voting to deny the appeal and affirm the decision of the planning commission regarding the full approval of Dr. Rains' request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Any other comments? Mr. Gans, anything? Mr. Lawrence?
Yes, sir. This is the same thing as before. We had five little cottages, but I don't know, Jerry, we have no description of 480-foot square foot cottage. So where did that come from? Cottage was always an extra structure on people's property. Now you build them as individual homes, 480 square feet.
Well, these, these made, these exceed the minimum requirement for a dwelling unit. Dwelling unit, I believe, says that it's got to be at least 399 square feet. And these exceed that amount. So there's nothing in there to prohibit this size from going in.
So we're going to start building 480-square foot houses all over city of Biloxi. Now, we're not going to do neighborhoods of big houses anymore. Everything we're building is, seem to be getting smaller and smaller and jacked on top of each other. I think you could say these 12 trees, I can still build what you want to build. You're building a little bit of things. I got to do the movement around. So I had no problem just adjusting that piece of property and keeping the 12 trees. I don't see why you got to chop up 12 trees that's reported a little cottage.
Well, as we, as we said before, there are 37 trees on the property right now. They're removing 12. Seven of those are in bad condition. Five of them are being... Five of them are being removed for fire department access or because they're in the footprint of one of these houses. He's saving twenty-five of the existing trees and he's planting twenty-four more. So we've got thirty-seven trees there now and after it's over, there'll be forty-nine there. So we're actually seeing an increase in the number of trees on the property.
And that's if they stay alive. Well, I haven't checked, and this is a different question, that they buried, they put the trees down and they died, who checks all that?
That's the city arborist's responsibility.
So we have recent, the ones that died, within a week, a bunch of them died and they replanted more.
He is, the city arborist under the ordinance is required for three years to monitor the survival of the trees that are on that property. And if any die, then he gets back with the developer and they replant more.
And the other problem with these twelve trees, they're not very, they're not very big trees. They're not really blocking much or anything. I don't know why the fire department at them, twelve trees taken down for whatever reason, I have no clue. These trees are not very big trees.
Yeah, it, it's because of the radius that the truck has to make when it's turning in. That, when it went through DRC, they were, actually told them that they were gonna have to remove some trees in that turn to the east that comes out into that office development next door that, that Dr. Rains also developed. And if you look at that development next door where Dr. Gillich's eye clinic is and everything, Dr. Rains designed that development to save those very mature live oaks that are on that property. He, he loves trees too. He don't wanna take any down, but he's just gonna have to to make this project-
I'm not saying that, I just think you could probably build a house you wanna build without taking down any trees. It's just where you put them at, the way you put the roads at. I mean, you have engineers for it.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments to send Mr. Shoemaker?
Just a few. I wanna echo what Councilman McGilvery said. Also, I think the owner, Mr. Rains, I don't know him, but it seems like he's gone above and beyond for this project or development and one that he's had built for many years. Look, I really do, I think they're majestic, they're beautiful, they're iconic, they're great. And I really don't like seeing them cut down. However, how do you tell an owner of property that they can't cut a tree down when they own the property? At some point, we need less government, not more government, involved in that. And I understand we have, sometimes we have to do things and I understand everybody's opinion. They don't want them cut, some do, they don't care. I really believe, if we could save them, I really do think that. In this case, in a lot of cases, we can't. Seven are pretty much gonna have to be gone anyway. And I think he's, the owner has gone above and beyond to do what he can do. It's not his decision, the trees, correct, Mr. Creel? The fire department has to make, is pretty much, most of the trees now, with the exception of the seven, is because turning radius and, for the fire department.
Yes, sir, the, the extra five, yes, sir.
Right, okay. And, and that's all I wanna say. I think he's gone above and beyond and I just, I don't know that we can tell owners all the time they can't cut a tree down on their own property that they own. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Just a couple of comments. I've read, reread, watched the video. We conducted a hearing two weeks ago. And just to, to summarize it, from everything I've seen, the developer, working with the tree committee, did pretty much what the committee, not necessarily the individuals on the committee, but what the committee as a whole recommended. When issues were raised, the developer addressed those issues. Maybe not to everybody's satisfaction, but to the committee's satisfaction as a whole. Again, the purpose is, as, as Mr. Shoemaker noted, if it's my property, why can't I do what I like with my property and with protected trees? The goal is to balance that.
That's correct.
Which means, you're not gonna get everything you want necessarily. You might, it depends on the circumstances. But that's why we have a committee comprised of seven people. When it's, when all the appointments are currently filled, we have seven folks to come to an agreement collectively. And that's what was done in this instance. The, the other comment I'd like to make is, and I think the last time we addressed mitigation, because that has bothered me since the last time we addressed it, it's been several years. I wanna say it was maybe two thousand seventeen. When we talked about mitigation and, and didn't change what has been the mitigation for the past couple of years. And that is to roughly, I don't know, saplings six to eight feet high of the protected species. Usually at market rates, about two hundred and fifty or three hundred bucks, depending on what kind of protected tree it is. What I would like to do, and I would propose as a charge to the, to the planning commission, is to look again at mitigation. I would, I would prefer that we move to something, for lack of a better term, I'll call it proportionality. Because when we, we take down some of these trees that are thirty-six, thirty-eight, forty-two inches in diameter, we're replacing them with saplings that are gonna take a hundred years to get that big. And rather look perhaps at, at some sort of cost per diameter inch. So that a, a developer, instead of looking at this forty-six inch oak tree, might say, I'll take it out and for five hundred bucks, I'll plant two saplings. And rather look, if you're charging, I don't know, a hundred dollars an inch, or fifty, whatever, that you're looking at now, that same tree. Now you're looking at something that's eight thousand dollars. Do you really wanna work around that or do you wanna pay? You know, that, that kinda stuff. And encourage contributions to the Tree Mitigation Trust, because that gives us a lot more flexibility in, in where to plant these trees and how to care for them. Go ahead, I think you wanna-
Actually, Dr. Drouthe brought that up to the planning commission-
Smart man.
And wanted that to happen. And he's working with Zach right now for them to work at the size of the replacement trees in relationship to the tree that was removed. And we'll also take a look at your suggestion about paying more in, you know, we can-
Right, just to have some kinda formula so everybody knows what the cost is at the beginning of the development process. And Mr. Lawrence's comment about following up with the arborists to be sure that these trees are, because this happens frequently.
Yes, sir.
You know, we, we lose track of them. So, all right, there being no further comments, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the resolution to deny the appeal and affirm the decision of the planning commission? Raise your hand. All opposed? All right, so six-one vote for the clerk. Mr. Lawrence in opposition. All right, that's- That brings us to item E. If the clerk would read item E, please.
Resolution granting minor subdivision final plot approval for sixteen seventy-three Pops Ferry Road.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Glavin.
I'll second.
And second by Mr. Shoemaker. Mr. Glavin?
Yeah, this is, just, they're trying to replat a couple of parcels of land. Jerry, you wanna talk to it a little bit? Off of Pops Ferry, I believe.
This is the property immediately to the east of the Trustmark Bank at the corner of Pops Ferry. It's a, it's a wooded area right now. But what we have going in there, it's one lot right now that's kind of L-shaped. Faces Pops Ferry, comes down behind the bank and comes over to Cedar Lake Road. They're dividing it into two lots. One lot will be for a new Dollar Tree and the other one will be for a Take Five Oil Change. That's what's proposed.
All right.
I don't have anything.
Nothing. Any other comments, questions by the council? There being none, all in favor, the resolution is presented. Raise your hand, it's approved on a seven-o vote. Thank you. As, as announced earlier, when we were adopting the agenda, I indicated that we'd be looking at a, an executive session. I would imagine, Mr. Abid, maybe five to ten minutes.
Yes, sir.
I'll consider a motion that, that we-
Could you, could you, they all waiting on a, want to know the county. You wanna just go and do that one by itself? Or you wanna do that?
Leave it where it's at. We're gonna go in the executive session right now, let's go in the executive session.
I've said, with respect to the people sitting out there, that's all.
No.
Yeah, they didn't sit there long enough.
Will be five or ten minutes. So I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session for the purpose of examining the necessity to go into executive session to discuss the Save Our Sound Coalition and the associated legal issues. Would that be accurate?
Yeah.
Mr. Abid?
Pending an anticipated litigation.
All right, so I need a motion to consider. There's a motion by Mr. Lawrence.
I'll second.
All right, give me a moment, please. All right, any discussion? All in favor of going into an execu, an executive session to discuss the Save Our Sound and possible litigation? Is that accurate? Okay. All right, there was a motion. All right, that's approved on a seven-o vote. That brings us next to the, I'll need a motion that when we conclude the closed session, we will reconvene as an open meeting.
Some ode.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second by McGilvery. All in favor? It's approved on a seven-o vote. I'll now entertain a motion and a second that council go into executive session. Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
Mr. Lawrence, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McGilvery, thank you. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? It's approved on a seven-o vote. We should be about five or ten minutes. Thank you.
I think he wants to work on his bill.
Three thirteen. Three twenty-three. Right at 10 minutes. All right. All right. Good. So I better understand that. That was, okay.
Which one? Your call was your?
Item A, yeah. I had some, okay. I got that. I suspect we've spent a little time discussing item B.
Change it. I thought you were.
What was this? End run with the PDI and all that stuff. It kind of works me. Quarky. Not going to be residential B. Only thing that could fall.
Open field.
Call Kevin all real quick.
Think that these owners. Home owners. I'll hit the chip.
Hey. Make sure I got my, got the facts straight. The commission meeting this week, is it just a, maybe an announcement made?
He went to his idol.
We'll be waiting on George. Okay. Where George at?
Will be just another moment. Thank you.
Come on, George. She did a very nice job. All right, I'll entertain a motion and a second to conclude the executive session and reconvene as an open meeting. Is there a motion?
Second.
By Mr. Lawrence. Is there a second by Mr. Guines?
Yes.
If I heard that correctly.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Approved on a seven oh vote. Thank you. We'll now move to the, oh, yeah, no action. No action was taken in executive session, just for the record. That brings us to the consent agenda item. I'll entertain a motion.
Some ood.
I'll second.
Mr. Lawrence. And a second by Mr. Guines. All right, Mr. Lawrence, any particular items?
Yeah, I guess we need to do.
Turn on your mic if you would, George.
Wait a minute, it's on.
Okay.
I'll get my glasses here.
Be loud with your glasses.
Okay. Are they going to bring B up and let us discuss that? Exactly what's going on with this, Fofa?
I will. I'll discuss.
All right, go ahead, Phil.
You want it?
Sure.
Okay, real quick, just to give a little history on it. Like I said, the Coast Line Martin Luther King Celebration was only, had begun to become just the Biloxi. Biloxi was the only one funded and all the other groups pulled out. And the reason they pulled out, because there was an audit, audit, a bad audit, apparently. And of course, Mr. Crowell mentioned that they ceased to do the parades a couple of year, a couple of years. So we filled in last year, the Legacy Business League filled in. They did a remarkable job to doing that. And we, all we're doing is repeating what we did, the same thing last year, bringing it back to Biloxi. We shouldn't have to, there was a couple of years where we were, Biloxi was the only funders and everybody in the group was made up of people outside of Biloxi. Now, if Biloxi's going to put in the money, then Biloxi needs to be in charge. We talked about we could possibly start a Biloxi committee, because if it's going to be in Biloxi. We are not, I am not against no parade. And we tried to bring the parties together. And here I'm looking at an email where seven or eight times to make sure we helped out in that parade, to make sure the parade, and that went on death is. There was one person, Dr. Mason's daughter was here, who's leading that up, who would be willing to head that committee for Biloxi to do that. And we can still make that happen, just like Ms. Stevens said. When I heard her talk about coming together, we can still make that happen, but people have to come together. And people have to be truthful at the end of the day. They have to tell the truth. And so, I'm not going to fight against things that are not, you know, fight against something that's not correct. What I want to do is I want to move the community forward, move the holiday festivities. This is too important of a holiday to be fighting. This is too important of a holiday to be in division. It was about bringing the people together at one cause. And this is what it's going to do. The door is always open. This is here is for accountability, because it was auditing issues. And what Biloxi want to do, the last thing Biloxi want to do, is not have an issue from a financial standpoint. So I'm asking all my colleagues, let's push forward, move it forward. Ms. Stevens, if you would like to help mend that bridge, we can possibly make sure that all these things take place. We want to educate, because Dr. King was about education and a day of service. That's what it was about, a day of service. And we have to make sure we continue to carry out that dream. Thank you.
Got the question there. Everybody got one of these packages? And we got all this stuff happening there. Everything listed, but the parade is not listed in this at all?
The parade is not listed in there, because we haven't, the person who was organizing the parade, we're still waiting on them, and they've been contacted several times.
Anybody from the parade come to you, Fofa, and ask for money? It's a parade committee. Because after we sponsor this, all this that's going on here, so.
And in years past, and I want to say in years past, not only were there auditing issues, but Biloxi logo was not put on there when we were, when it was, when money was being given. This is about, again, accountability. And then at the end of the day, when it came down to budgeting, every organization had an opportunity to come up here and make a request.
That's what I was asking.
They did, the only one made a request was, this program right here made the request, and that's why it's being put up, because the request was made here.
Like I told you before.
But the door is not shut.
Right. I'd say before, you know, probably you do something in Biloxi. Gulfport, that's their problem. Biloxi would need to do it, so.
And Gulfport, and Gulfport shouldn't be, Gulfport, and I'm not trying to throw them under the bus, but the thing is, if the money, if the monies are coming from Gulfport, I mean Biloxi, if the money's coming from Biloxi, this is a Biloxi project.
That's right. I tell you that before.
And nobody else should be running this Gulf.
Nobody ought to Gulfport. So what's your take on that? We got all this, how much money we got? And how much money can we help?
It's a matter of how much money we've got. How much have we started?
What you need?
How much money can we raise? I think Mr. Crowell mentioned, and again, our conversations about the parade, the parade itself, that I think he'd mentioned is about nine, that, you know, Ula Crowell and Ms. Crowell and Elaine had talked about a nine or 10 bands, including Valley, that we're trying to commit, but we don't have the funds at this point in time. So the parade that was mentioned, that you heard about today, and the activities that the 10,000 is going to fund, which is already in play, well, there's opportunity to do both things together. It's just a matter of how we nail the expense and how we make things happen. I'm all for it. I'll tell you, those parades is important, you know? I mean, we're there for the Battle of the Bands, those kinds of things. It's very important. The opportunity is great for us, for Biloxi, to do it together, and that's the main.
And let me, let me add to it. Ms. Dr. Mason's daughter, Ms. JuZang, we're talking matching money. We're not talking about where Biloxi's funding everything. We're talking about some people who are bringing something to the table. And like I said, I have the email here where we constantly reached out, because they can also help when it comes down to funding, where it won't be on the city.
Right.
See, but you have to be open and you have to come together, just like Ms. Stevens said.
We need to gather up and put our heads together and go reach out for the funding that it's going to take. This is a $50,000 event for what was talked about today. There's 10,000 to do the things that we're going to do the week before, but the 20th is the, I think the target date of doing this great, this great event. Downtown Howard Avenue to the ball field. That's what has been talked about. But the, the whole opportunity was after budget had been done. And this is as a result of this, the budget was planned. So what we're trying to do is sort of, you know, two months late with regard to the October budget position we're in, but it's just a matter of money and, and I think, energy and dedication to pull us off.
And we have.
We get together, we can pull it off.
And we have budget for a reason.
I get it. So, yeah, it's getting too late, but it's not too late, like you're saying, and we're hearing people earlier to come together. Is there an opportunity? There's a lot of folks that are not in the room, that were here earlier, to bring those, those people together with whatever. It looks like there's two or three committees.
Right, right, right. And that's actually what's hap, but Ms. JuZang said she's willing to help. And like I said, they bring money to the table themselves. And they are willing to open up to make sure we can have all the festivities. You just got to have willing participants.
See, the problem looked like.
Elaine, you in charge now? You in charge? You pulling it together?
Yeah, come up and talk.
Please, please.
But Biloxi needs a committee. Biloxi do need a committee of their own.
My concern was it, the money being moved from, from the committee to the Parks and Recreation and allowing the people to have their own festivities, not, you know, like the second liners do and like other clubs. And it was, it was explained to me, and probably not correctly, that it was being ripped away from the rights of the people. And you know how I am, this is who I am, about people should have their voices heard and be able to plan their own celebrations. And with Angie now, she has a vested interest, because her father is Dr. Mason. And she said that there was some disorganization in the past, and of course, last year, it did not exist, from what I understand, did not occur. So I think they're in the throes of change, which we can all appreciate in our country right now, that maybe there's a little bit of divisiveness here, that maybe they need to come together. And it's less about ownership than it is about getting it done and collaborating and having a compromise. Their main concern was the moving of the 10,000 through a resolution that they were not aware of, because they felt there was no transparency in that regard, and how the money got moved. And that it suddenly motivated everyone to start reacting.
It was designated during budgeting for that purpose. So there was not, of course, like I said, you were told. And that's where the issue was, you were told. During budgeting, we allocated and we all agreed on every line item in this budget. We went through it step by step. And we talked about where this was going to go. And we all agreed to put that there. And like I said, now you have a person that just come from the outside and said, I want that and I'm going to get it. I can't go into the mayor's budget and just snatch $20,000, $30,000 out of there, because I said it belongs to me. You can't do that. That's not right.
Pardon me for interrupting, but I think it was a 30-year history of monies being allocated for MLK and the fear that that would go away. You know, and for the, this is about identity culture and sharing our, our culture here together, because that's what makes our community unique. Unlike other coast communities, we have that here in Biloxi. And we share that identity. I just addressed the NAACP on the beach the other day about the middle passage. And, you know, there's this unity factor that I think is very significant in what we do. And I think this kind of upset can be very positive, in that they can really come together after this and decide how they want to create the parade, Battle of the Bands, and expand the event to a better event.
Create a committee.
Together.
Create a unified committee is what has to be done.
Yes. Ms. Ula and Angie have not been communicating, not to, Angie has been trying. And so I am now tasked.
Over 10 times.
Can I, can I ask one thing?
Certainly.
You know, if y'all put this together and bring all the groups together, I'd like to see Councilman Guines get up there and do the Trump, you know.
That will be in the contract. We will make sure it happens.
Yeah, but, but again, the door's still open. The door's open. We got time to, to, to.
So where does the resolution stand?
Well, it's going in there for accountability, because we had auditing issues.
Okay, so it was about.
When it was in the committee stage.
I think they felt mistrusted. I think they felt that there was a lack of trust.
Technically, right now, there's nobody with actual 501(c)(3).
Understood.
And so right now, it's better to do it through the, through, it's a city project, doing it through the city for accountability. But it's still going to be done, one way or the other.
So what can be the next step?
The next step is to, well, you just have to bring the parties together. The monies are there. Once we vote, the money's there, and all you got to do is bring the parties together.
And they can decide how to expend those dollars? Yes.
Get something straight. And make sure everybody's listening. We did not take the money from the parade.
There you go. That's what I would like.
We took this money and put it into these projects, Martin Luther King Day. So we never abandoned Martin, and we did that at budget time. The money was requested, and we put up the 10,000 and sponsored these programs. So we didn't do anything about the parade. Nobody ever come, talk to us about having a parade.
Nobody showed up.
How they coming? And it's no big, it's no big deal, we're going to have a parade, we're going to put it together. I'm all foot.
Now, if you're going to have a parade, yeah.
I'm all foot.
Right, right. Yeah, you're making it like we're not, we're not, we're against the parade, and that individual that put that out, that's simply not true.
I think it was about the monies.
We wanted to make sure that things happen. The thing is about an, a person wanted to be in charge. Anybody could be in charge of it. We don't care who's in charge. It's just making sure.
Got the question there, everybody got one of these packages. And we got all this stuff happening there, everything listed, but the parade is not listed in this at all.
The parade is not listed in there because we haven't, the person who was organizing the parade, we're still waiting on them and they've been contacted several times.
Anybody from the parade come to you Fofa and ask for money, it's the parade committee. Cause after we sponsor this, all this that's going on here, so.
And in years past, and I want to say in years past, not only were there auditing issues, but Biloxi logo was not put on there when we were, when, when it was, when money was being given. This is about, again, accountability. And then at the end of the day, when it came down to budgeting, every organization had an opportunity to come up here and make a request.
That's what I was asking.
They did, uh, the only one made a request was this program right here made the request and that's why it's being put up, because the request was made here.
Like I tell you before.
But the door is not shut.
Right, I tell you before, I had no problem with doing something in Biloxi. You know Gulfport, that's their problem. Biloxi, we need to do it, so.
And Gulfport, and Gulfport shouldn't be Gulfport, and, and I'm not trying to throw them under the bus, but the thing is if, if the finance, if the monies are coming from Gulfport, I mean Biloxi, if the money's coming from Biloxi, this is a Biloxi project.
That's right, I tell you that before.
And nobody else should be running this.
Not supporting anybody out of Gulfport. So what's your take on that? We got all this, how much money we got, and how much money can we help?
It's a matter of how much money we've got, how much have we started?
What you need.
How much money can we raise? I think Mr. Crowell mentioned, and again, our conversations about the parade, the parade itself, that I think he'd mentioned is about nine, that, you know, you and Crowell and Ms. Crowell and Elaine talked about a nine or 10 bands, including Valley, that we're trying to commit, but we don't have the funds at this point in time. So the parade that was mentioned, that you heard about today, and the activities that the, the 10,000 is going to fund, which is already in play, well, there's opportunity to do both things together. It's just a matter of how we nail the, the expense and how we make things happen. I'm all for it. I'll tell you, we, those parades is important, you know, I mean, we're there for the Battle of the Bands, those, those kinds of things, it's very important. The, the, the opportunity is great for us, for Biloxi, to do it together, and that's the main.
And let me, and let me add, add to it, Ms. Ju, Dr. Mason's daughter, Ms. Ju Zhang, we're talking matching money. We're not talking about where Biloxi's funding everything. We're talking about some people who are bringing something to the table. And like I said, I have the email here where we constantly reached out because they can also help when it comes down to funding, where it won't be on the city.
Right.
See, but, but you have to be open and you have to come together, just like Ms. Stevens said.
We, we need to gather up and, and put our heads together and go reach out for the funding that it's going to take. This is a $50,000 event for what was talked about today. There's 10,000 to do the things that we're going to do the week before, but the 20th is the, I think the target date of doing this great, uh, this great event. Downtown Howard Avenue to, to the ball field. That's what has been talked about. The, the whole opportunity was after budget had been done, and this is as a result of this budget is planned. So what we're trying to do is sort of, you know, two months late with regard to the October budget position that we're in, but hey, it's just a matter of money and, and, and I think energy and dedication to pull us off.
And we have.
We get together, we put, we can pull it off.
And we have budget for a reason.
I, I got it. So yeah, it's getting too late, but it's not too late, like you're saying, and we're hearing people earlier to come together. Is there an opportunity, there's a lot of folks that are not in the room, that were here earlier, to bring those, those people together with whatever, it looks like there's two or three committees.
Right, 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 and that's actually what's hap, but Ms. Ju Zhang said she's willing to help. And like I said, they bring money to the table themselves, and they are willing to open up to make sure we can have all the festivities. You just got to have willing participants.
Okay. See, the problem looked like.
Elaine, you in charge now? You in charge, you pulling, you pulling it together?
Yeah, come up and talk.
Please, please.
But Biloxi needs a committee. Biloxi do need a committee of their own.
So, um, my concern was it, the money being moved from, from the committee to the Parks and Recreation and allowing the people to have their own festivities, not, you know, like the second liners do and like other clubs do. And it was, it was explained to me, and probably not correctly, that it was being ripped away from the rights of the people. And you know how I am, this is who I am, about people should have their voices heard and be able to plan their own celebrations. And with Angie now, she has a vested interest because her father is Dr. Mason, and she said that there was some disorganization in the past, and of course, last year it did not exist, from what I, I understand, did not occur. So I think they're in the throes of change, which we can all appreciate in our country right now, that maybe there's a little bit of divisiveness here, that maybe they need to come together. And it's less about ownership than it is about getting it done and collaborating and having a compromise. Their main concern was the moving of the 10,000 through a resolution that they were not aware of, because they felt there was no transparency in that regard, and how the money got moved. And then it suddenly motivated everyone to start reacting.
It was designated during budgeting for that purpose, so there was not, you, of course, like I said, you were told, and, and that's where the issue was, you were told. During budgeting, we allocated and we all agreed on every line item in this budget. We went through it step by step, and we talked about where this was going to go, and we all agreed to put that there. And like I said, now you have a person that just come from the outside and said, I, I want that and I'm going to get it. I can't go into the mayor's budget and just snatch 20, $30,000 out of there because I said it belongs to me. You can't do that. That's not right.
Pardon me for interrupting, but I think it was a 30-year history of, of monies being allocated for MLK and the fear that that would go away. You know, and for the, this is about our identity culture and sharing our, our culture here together, because that's what makes our community unique. Unlike other coast communities, we have that here in Biloxi, and we share that identity. I just addressed the NAACP on the beach the other day about the middle passage. And, you know, there's this unity factor that I think is very significant in what we do. And I think this kind of upset can be very positive, in that they can really come together after this and decide how they want to create the parade, Battle of the Bands, and expand the event to a better event.
Create a committee.
Together.
Create a unified committee is what has to be done.
Yes, Ms. Yula and Angie have not been communicating, not to, Angie has been trying, and so I am now tasked.
Over 10 times.
Can I, can I ask one thing?
Certainly.
You know, if y'all put this together and bring all the groups together, I'd, I'd like to see Councilman Gines get up there and do the Trump, you know.
That will be in the contract, we will make sure it happens.
Yeah, but, but again, the door's still open. The door's open. We got time to, to, to.
So where does the resolution stand?
The, well, it's going in there for accountability because we had auditing issues.
Okay, so it was about.
When it was in the committee stage.
I think they felt mistrusted. I think they felt that there was a lack of trust.
Technically, right now, there's nobody with actual 501(c)(3).
Understood.
And so right now, it's better to do it through the, um, uh, through the, it's a city project, doing it through the city for accountability, but it's still going to be done one way or the other.
So what can be the next step?
The next step is to, uh, well, you just have to bring the parties together. The monies are there.
Low and.
Once we vote, the money's there and all you got to do is bring the parties together.
And they can decide how to, to expend those dollars, yes?
Get, get something straight, and make sure everybody listens. We did not take the money from the parade.
There you go. That's what I would like.
Right. We took this money and put it into these projects, Martin Luther King Day, so we never abandoned Martin, and we did that at budget time. The money was requested, and we put up the 10,000 and sponsored these programs. So we didn't do anything about the parade. Nobody ever come, talk to us about having a parade.
Nobody showed up.
How they coming? And it's no big, it's no big deal, we're going to have a parade, we're going to put it together, I'm, I'm all foot.
Now, if you're going to have a parade, yeah.
I'm all foot.
Right, right. You, you, yeah, you're making it like we're, we're not, we're not, we're against the parade and that, that individual that put that out, that's simply not true.
I think it was about the monies.
We wanted to make sure that things happen, that the thing is about an, a person wanted to be in charge. Anybody could be in charge of it. We, we don't care who's in charge. It's just making sure things are done, that accountability is done with it. That's all it is about, accountability. And we just want to make sure accountability is done.
And I thank you for, for hearing us today and for making those changes and for allowing them to speak, and also for designating the holiday as such. I think their fear was that it was going to disappear.
And, and let me just add this note, when, when I came in in 2013, uh, we were, I think we were getting what, $700 or maybe a thousand? So from that thousand, it grew to $10,000 from that standpoint. And I'm not trying to toot the horn, but, but most of these council members, most of these council members were a, a, a major part of bringing those dollars, where other cities walked away. And so Biloxi has always been on the cutting edge of celebrating diversity.
Yes.
And Martin Luther King Holiday. And, and this council came in on a special day on Martin Luther King to make sure this was Martin Luther King's holiday, not Great Americans' Day.
Good.
This council did that.
It's about, like I said, identity culture, you know.
So, so, right, and so we got to be careful to look at the information and not just hear what, what's thrown out there. It's about the real information. And that's what I'm giving to you today.
Thank you.
Yes. And I came to you because I respect, I, I, as a respect factor.
Well, I respect the council and I respect the city for, for doing the, the right thing. So thank you very much. Thank you, Fofa. Thank you, everyone. It's an honor to be here today.
Excuse me, Mr. Carney, just let us just have more discussion first. Uh, Elaine, don't disappear. Okay. Uh, Mr. McGilvery.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Question.
Mayor, I'm, I'm new on the board still, and I have a question. I know when we did, went through the budget, we budgeted two 10,000s. One for MLK and one for Juneteenth.
Yes.
To be processed through the Recreation.
Right, right, Juneteenth, because we've always celebrated Juneteenth, and we're the first city to celebrate Juneteenth on the Mississippi Gulf Coast.
Okay, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Okay. So that's 20,000, the way I add. And hearing what everybody talked about, and, and Chief Miller knows, Vincent Creel knows, and the city knows, I was involved in all them parades too. And I know how big they are, and like we've talked several times, Mayor, that, that's a big event and we need to have the parade. So if I'm understanding, Councilman Gines, is it, we now are going to coordinate and have a group that's going to meet for the parade and this event that's already scheduled, the dates and everything.
That's already scheduled, yeah.
So there's going to be a function.
Yes.
Two separate times, parade one and then these other.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think that, I, I don't think that they overlap, to my knowledge at this point.
The 20th would be the parade.
Right, right.
Actually, the 20th would be the parade, I think 11th and 12th and 13th.
But it'll, it will take some coordinating for, for it to happen.
So my question is, we can use out of that 20,000 and then maybe address Juneteenth at further down the line when it gets, if we need to do some more funding for that?
Well, it, yeah, it's, it's budget, I mean, so it can be moved around, but, you know, we don't, we don't want to avoid Juneteenth, but I mean, if, if we got the group together and everybody's in one room and we identified it's going to take to do what we need to do on the 20th, I think the 20th is the day we're, what we're trying to do, the parade. We've kind of identified, you know, around the loop, downtown, wind up, if there's a Battle of the Bands, that, so that's a $40,000 event. You know, the 10's going to help, and I've, I've indicated that, you know, there's other cities that would reach out, I think the Abbeville was mentioned, come with about a thousand, uh, Moss Point, even Pascagoula, I mean, we're going to reach out to try and make that 40, you know, 10, we got 40 to go, or 30 more to go. We're going to, you know, whittle it down, there's some things that I've been, I've heard about as far as raising money. Let's identify what it's going to take and let's go get the money. But yeah, I mean, you could do, but we don't want to avoid, we don't want to put Juneteenth out the window.
I'm not saying that, no, I'm not saying that.
Yeah. What, what I, what I could suggest, you know, and this is a suggestion, and, and Angie, before she had to go, mentioned about a committee, a committee, and she would be willing, and like I said, she's moved into Dr. Mason's house here in Biloxi, she's a Biloxian, and heading up that committee to, to make sure all parts and all parts of it could be done and done properly. But again, this is a Biloxi event, and I want to, and, and, and what we should make sure that Biloxi has all the vested interests in it, because we're footing the bill. You know, we don't want everybody from other cities running a Biloxi show.
Yeah, there's a lot of logistics and, I mean, a lot of folks, you don't want to drop everything, you know, without really thinking the logistics of, of doing this thing, you know, feeding the bands, you know, do the things that you need to do, you know, taking care of the parade route, if there's a Battle of the Bands, where is there going to be? So Biloxi, from, from an administrative standpoint, we can handle that part of the logistics, but, you know, task by task, somebody's got to, you know, lead the way. And we need to get together in order to figure out that, who's going to lead the way.
Somebody's got to back, a backup and say, hey, let's, let's go ahead and let's just go in. And just like I said, if Ms. Stevens can, can help build that bridge, I would be willing to.
From a budgetary standpoint, we're going to have two more meetings, and hopefully over the next week or two weeks, I mean, we're going to be, December 3rd or 4th, you don't need the money till you're spending money in July. But I mean, we're going to have some opportunity, if the budget, you know, we can get it from one place to the other, or, you know, our new money, we've got to figure out who's coming up with what. Just need to identify, because it's a lot of unknowns now.
Well, we have, we have the two events that are definitely going to take place, we already funded both of them through the budget, but we need to look at it and find another 10,000 to try to help the parade at least.
We need to find another 30,000 or 40,000.
We always put 10,000 for the parade. You can always go after more money.
Now, now.
The city part was.
We got to remember, you know, we have, we have a vehicle in place, and what was offered was to help find funding to offset the city. The city don't need to tote all the weight of everything. We, we need to look at those, uh, vehicles that we already have in place, because if we can get donors to come in and help out, which, and, and I've said this probably five times, Ms. Ju Zhang said she was, uh, open and readily available to help try to bring this in. And of course, in these emails, or seven, eight emails to let the other party know, the, the parade party know that these things were available, and sometimes you just got to say yes.
I agree, and I think the main concern was, as Fofa said, the additional expense involved in bringing those bands from the colleges to Biloxi, because it requires transportation, housing, and food. And that is based on donations and contributions and the generosity of pastors and their congregations. So a lot of that has been historically coming from that. I'm not sure what state they are right now in the fundraising, because it's been stagnant for a year, you know, so again, they'll have to come together and figure that out, but with the city on board and cooperating with both sides, in which I'm going to bring them together, I think we can do this.
I think without, without question, I have no doubt that we're.
I have no doubt.
We're on board, but you know, some of the things, you know, this is an event, or a really great event, on the 20th that we pull this off. Now, there are people like coastal, you know, this is a tourist event, this is an event that bring people together, coastal tourism, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Dollars can be had, Mississippi power, they've, they've helped us in another way. There's several places, the, the 30 or 40 doesn't bother us, we've got to have very be precise of plan, and this is what it's going to take, you drop this my way, we're going to do this. So I mean, the, it's an opportunity and a challenge at the same time.
Totally an opportunity for two parties to come together and, and showcase their respective talents and what they want this event to look like.
Yeah, well, it's supposed to be about all Biloxians.
And all Biloxi, absolutely. And, and make it a coastwide celebration and not just hold it to the city, but to let the city celebrate the entire thing.
Yeah.
You know.
All right, I think Mr. Shoemaker had a question or two.
I just, well, a couple of questions if I can, and I guess I'm somewhat confused. I know we budgeted the 10,000 for MLK and a 10,000 for Juneteenth, and I understand that, and we're putting it now, we're moving it to Pub, or Parks and Rec, so they can disperse the money. Now, what determines who they disperse the money to? Because if.
Events that have already been on the calendar.
Yeah, but you already have a 501(c)(3) organization that, that can, that can receive the money. Right now, um, there's no way, you know, they don't have a 501(c)(3) or whatever this organization, I, I don't know a lot about it. But the last organization sort of just went, went away, so to speak, or still out there, they, they're pending, uh, the old Martin Luther King Group.
Someone got married and then became a, a parent, you know, and so there was a leave of absence, another leader took off and there was no communication there from, I understand.
In other words, there are issues, and so we just want to get past the issues, because there has to be a vehicle in order to do it, and we have one.
I think you have to do what's best for you as well, and, you know, if, if, keep it organized and keep it systematic, so there won't be questions about an audit with the city. And I think Angie and her group are, are best adept at that, but I, I think the people of this community that spoke today definitely want to be involved in some capacity. Therein lies our diplomatic efforts.
And not snowed.
And not what?
Snowed.
And not snowed, okay, got it, all right.
Mr. Shoemaker, did you have another question?
Yeah, I have a few more things, please. Transparency, we have to be transparent.
I agree.
This is a huge event, no doubt. I just, the people that spoke today, there was a lot of people that spoke today, and very passionate people here, and I think at some point, and I know everybody says we, we have to be fair to everyone, I don't know, quite frankly, the difference between one group versus the other, um, but apparently there's two different groups, and I don't know, and I know you've discussed getting these groups together, but it's going to cost more money, like the mayor said.
It is.
And I'm with Councilman McGilvery, I, I don't know, I, I think we should come up, we try to come up with more money, and if it's 10,000 to one, I mean, at least 10,000 to the other, I, I'm, you know, the, the parade's a big event, and you said it yourself, Mayor, I mean, it's, it's, brings in tourism too, but I think it's something we need, I don't guess we had it last year, and obviously there was some issues, but it, it, it needs to be back. Who, who has done that event the last, I mean, until last year, it's been going on for years.
We haven't had it in three years, three years, an event.
From what I, well, I, I, I was just pulled into this.
Two, we had.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, we did.
It's been two years, I, from what I understand. Who has handled it in the past? A committee of citizens that called themselves the MLK Coastwide Celebration Committee.
It was the MLK Coastwide Celebration Committee, and most of the people were, and I'm not trying to use the city name, but they were from the neighboring city that way. And the whole, Biloxi was footing the whole bill, and everybody on the committee was from over there. And that's not fair to Biloxi at all.
And there were some events that occurred in Gulfport, and there were some events that occurred here as well, because I get a lot of the invitations.
And of course, Biloxi, you know, if we're donating, as the mayor said, we're donating thi, this insurmountable amount of money, you can't leave the, uh, uh, our advertising off, cannot do that.
Well, let's get 20,000 from Gulfport and let's make it a coast.
I didn't call no names, I didn't call no names.
Ain't going to happen.
So, the, the only thing I'm saying is, it's time just to move forward.
It is.
I mean, we're beating, we're beating a, a horse that's already dead.
And you've already succeeded by expanding the notion that we, they need more money to bring in the parade.
It needs to be an olive branch. The first thing needs to happen is that olive branch.
That's the first.
Because we have a lot going on and a lot planned.
All right, I think Mr. The Shoemaker had another question, then I have a couple of questions.
So, the money today, we'll vote on that. The money, the 10,000 will be moved to Parks and Rec budget, and then that money has already been earmarked to the, um, Legacy Business League, is that correct?
You already have it.
So they're already, they've already got this money we're talking about today, that's already.
They don't have it, but.
No, no, but I mean, it's already earmarked for them.
That's for the events of the 12th.
Yes, this is what was, this is what was handled at budget time. This was handled at budget.
Well, I remember the 10,000, I just didn't remember really anybody coming to talk to us, and then I remember seeing a letter a month or so ago from maybe a coastwide group, but apparently they're not the same as the Legacy Business League. Um, okay, all I'm going to, I'll finish up.
And, and they're in position to, just say if the bands come, they can go ahead and pay the bands too. If we fi, allocate the extra money, they can go ahead and take care of that, because you already have a person and a vehicle in place.
If we have, if we're hustling some money and we get it, it's going to go to that, whatever that is.
Yeah, we can, we can use the same vehicle, because.
You know, we've got two sets of events, one on 11th, 12th, and 13th, and the other one's on the 20th.
Yes, yes.
20th is the parade.
So.
Have all the dates, but I know that there are some conflicts about programs that Angie has already planned, she has her flyer.
Yeah.
And then Ms. Crowell has the Battle of the Bands, which is something they want to continue. So therein, they have to come together to agree that it's one cohesive MLK celebration.
Or at least the band. The band part is what the citizens want to hear.
And that's what they want to hear.
The bands, so that's what we are for the band.
I think the parade and the band, the parade and, and winding up with the Battle of the Bands at the end of the parade. So it's one event on the 20th.
Right.
Yeah, one event on the 20th and the rest is, is what the, what the city.
But the money will come from Parks and Recreation.
Well, it's going to go through, that's the vehicle.
That would be the vehicle, and.
And then it'll, it'll pay, uh, Legacy, and Legacy can go ahead and make sure all the, everybody's paid.
So once we get Ms. Yula on board, we'll, we'll see how.
We can, we can, right, it just, it's kind of like, send the bill of what it's going to take, and then we just go ahead and make sure we get a, a proper budget to take care of everybody.
Anybody have a helmet I can wear when I talk to Ms. Yula?
I think we need to, listen, this is the 20th, you know, we got two months to do this.
Right.
And, you know, I think we need to do as much as we can do next week, you know, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday.
That's what Angie was saying, absolutely.
So feel free to have this as.
Because Thanksgiving is next week.
Yeah, but we got Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday.
All right, Mr.
But what do we need to do in regards to your tasks? How can we?
Angie and.
Let's, Mr. Glavine has a question, a follow-up question, go ahead.
I'm filtering everything that's coming through, so one thing you said is they can go ahead and pay the bands, we have to, if we have any of our money that we're raising, it has to go through your Legacy 501c.
Well, that'd be the easiest way, or.
Plus they sponsor with other money and they sponsor a band.
Yeah, unless they sponsor with other money, yeah.
And that's different from any money that we, additional money that we.
But we need to know what, but before we can do anything, we need to know what the budget is.
That's right, so the planning is still, you know, you don't have a budget and a planning from X, A to Z, you know, and that, somebody's going to have to put that together. It's exciting, you got a group of people that can join this group, because the more volunteers, the better, you know, when you put it on a big event like this.
And there's a reason why we do budget, so we can know what we're spending.
Go ahead, Mayor, then I have a couple of questions.
Let me reveal what I'm, what has been revealed to me as far as the 20th event. You know, we, we do want to pull off the parade. Parade coming down Martin Luther King down Howard Avenue, then winding up at the Ball Field with a number of bands. Hopefully we've got, as I understand it, Valley, Mississippi Valley is, is in place, a contract is in place. There are a number of things that we got transportation and a, a sit-down place for them to eat. And the expenses related to them eat. If we're successful with Alcorn and JSU, that's gonna.
JSU's out of the picture, I think, according to Mr. Crowell. JSU is out. Because I think Jackson State is not available because they have so many other demands.
Okay, so possibly Alcorn, possibly not. But I think Valley is, is the biggest of, biggest band of all.
Right.
And they would, you know, of course be the attraction. And then six to nine high school bands.
Right.
And, and if it's just Valley, then again, they, they would expect more than a brown bag situation.
Correct.
A number of alumni, I think from Valley would handle some of the food, food prep, food, food expense. So I mean, we gotta, you know, have a spreadsheet and put out, this is what we gotta do. This is what it's gonna cost to do it. And who's gonna do what, when and where? That's why it's important to get everybody in a room.
Absolutely.
And nail as much of, of what it's gonna take, you know, what we know we're gonna be faced with. And we got a bottom line at the number. And if the city or other cities can help, we'll, we'll let down. You know, again, I'm in a position like Felix mentioned. This is gonna be coastal, you know, and I think it's important to, it just happens to be in Biloxi.
Exactly. That's my point. Okay, very good. Thank you.
I have a couple of comments or observations, maybe a question or two. The first is we appropriated 10,000 for the Martin Luther King Celebration, which we have done every year as long as I've been on the council and as long as George has been on the council when they first established the council. So having said that, the, the next issue is, so now we have 10,000 out there for the MLK Celebration. We're dealing with the Legacy Group and I didn't hear Legacy mentioned till a couple of days ago. And we're dealing with the Martin Luther King Junior Committee. All right, whereas before we had the MLK Coastwide Celebration, now that's kind of falling apart. The wheels came off for a couple of years, whatever. Okay? So now we have these two groups out here. And moving forward, we had, we had begun working, I think, with the Parks and Recreation Planning because the city's associated with this as a sponsor, was dealing with the Legacy Group. My understanding is the Martin Luther King Junior Committee was invited. Calls were made.
Yes, they were.
My understanding is calls were never returned.
I think you're correct on that.
Okay, so that being the case, what I'm hearing today is can't we all get along?
My point.
And, and, and that, and that being the case, then if, if everybody's gonna get together and do the kumbaya thing, they gotta get together quickly. So what would it take to get the Martin Luther King Junior Committee people who've been out there on their own? What would it take to get them to work with the Legacy Committee?
I think Bofo has a tremendous amount of influence with Mrs. Crowell. And I will help. And I will help.
Now, the next thing is, because this is kind of simmered below the surface a little bit for the past several years. As Mr. Guines pointed out, we have a planning cal- budget calendar. We do this every year. The council's always done that. And we always have non-departmentals, what we call them, they're not affiliated with any, any department of the city. They come and request funding for certain projects. Requested it, we provided it. No problem. We've done what we've always done. Yet here we are today because the Martin Luther King Junior Committee, which I first heard about in October when we received a letter, no individual's name on it, just the committee. But that individual was fully aware of what our budget calendar was. Okay? So my first thought is we can't have this happen next year. We, we gotta iron this out right now, in the next couple of weeks. And Mayor, I appreciate what you're saying, but you pretty much have planned the thing. I don't think you want to be in the middle of the planning. That's for these organizations to do. I think you'll, I think you'll help where you can. All right, so what, what would it, my, my question is what would it take for the Martin Luther King Junior Committee to pick up the phone and call the Legacy Group and say, we want to work with you? Now, what, what would it take to do that? Would it take a few thousand dollars? Are they just not gonna talk to each other?
Cannot answer that because I have to be honest with you.
I understand.
I was brought in on this literally.
Sure, an hour ago.
Yesterday. So my point of view is collaboration and compromise and relinquishing ownership and detaching from the ego of, of this and actually celebrating it together. So a phone call on my part to Ms. Ula, I think would be helpful. But I know she spoke to the mayor today and perhaps her being convinced that this is the way things have to be in order for accountability and organization and a productive event would be the best way to go. It's a step-by-step process here.
No, I, I agree, but what does it, what does it take to get them to work together?
Phone call, I'm hoping.
You know, this is, the only reason this is a council issue is because we put 10,000 out there.
And we thank you. I mean.
Okay, that's the only reason it's a council issue. Okay? So, so that, that being said, I, I guess I'll just.
One last thing.
Leave it there. I understand. I, I think I'll just leave it there. But perhaps, Mayor, you said beat the bushes, community contributors. I don't know, maybe the council here might come up with something. All right, we got a couple of weeks, but it's gonna take some quick planning.
We don't have a couple of weeks. I think we have next week.
Next week.
We need to put, we need bodies in a room.
That's right.
And define what we gotta do and, and, you know, we will do our part to hustle what, what is needed. I think Mike just gave me a note, one thing we talked about, we got the, the stadium booked for the event. Okay? So we got a place to have it. We got a street to have it. We just need the funds to have it. But then we gotta nail it down. I think we need to do this next week.
No, you do because other people have to plan. Folks have to, you know, reserve dates and times and so forth. Let me do this. We had two individuals that wanted to speak. I'll have Mr. Carney first, if you'll come up, Mr. Carney. Then I'll have Mr. Crell follow you, Mr. Carney.
And if I could say something while he's walking up, just real quick, thank you.
I just want to say, go ahead, go ahead. He want to say something?
I was just.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Just real quick, other cities, Moss Point, I believe the mayor said, DeIrbville, other cities are involved, I think, in the actual Battle of the Bands and the parade that day. How can we not be involved at, at some point when it's in our city? I don't see how we can't be involved. It's been here for years. I think we have to be involved in that. It's, it, it's, I, I can't even imagine us not being involved, but that's all I have. Thank you.
I just want to say, when this started out, I, I heard several comments about, this started out at the Yankee Stadium and it was huge, brought a lot of income to this city. And I would certainly like to see it come back. I did speak with Dr. Mason's daughter prior to coming here and she kind of shared with me some of what was going on. And I will, I told her that I would volunteer and try to help bring the parties together. And I'll say that here to you all today, that I will try to speak to those parties. I know who they are and see if they, we all can get them together and come back to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carney. Mr. Crell, you had comments, I believe?
Yeah, I do, Paul. Thank you. I was involved with this committee and this group going back to the mid 90s. There is no reason that this group cannot pay those bands directly as they've done in the past. We all know that this just started being an issue two years ago. Two years ago is when all the questions started coming up. And you can see the divisiveness that it's created in this community. Now, back in the days in the 80s, 1986, the federal government said, we're gonna declare MLK Day. And the people that were sitting in your chairs right up there said, no, we're gonna go with Great Americans Day. And we did that all the way up till 2017. And when the national media came here and said, what problem does Biloxi have with MLK Day? We were able to say, we're bigger than anybody on MLK. We had Jackson State, Valley and Alcorn all here in one year. We had no divisiveness. We had no problem. So I don't know why it went off track two years ago. I can't imagine why, but it did. I keep hearing about an audit, but I have seen nothing about any audit where anything was wrong. I think it's terrible that that's being said. I think it's terrible that this money was being taken away. The reason that money was in the budget every year was because for this event, two years ago, somebody started squawking, wanting to take that money. This event has, uh, Juneteenth has never seen $10,000 put in it. That started two years ago as well. So what you need to look at, I think, is what the people that came in here to say about what was happening with this event, why they want to leave it the same way it is. Could Ms. Ula done things better? Could other things have done, been done better? Yes, they could have, but with the stroke of a pen, you can waive all of these formalities. Instead of us going through two months of negative publicity, which we're gonna get, you know that. Instead of going through all that, I'm asking you to spend $10,000 on the coastwide MLK. Now, I keep hearing about other cities and what are they donating because Biloxi's donating the most? You gave $30,000 to Cruisin' the Coast. They have events all over the coast. So what's wrong with this event? Why is this event being treated differently? You support Gulf Coast Carnival and you support Neptune. Do you make them come in here and have one committee? I don't think you do. I don't think you should treat MLK any different than any other event. There will be accountability and this, this notion that they can't pay the bands, they can pay the bands. They've paid the bands for years. We had three of them here, three giant bands. That's like having the Thunderbirds and the Blue Angels in one city. It just does not happen that much. I hate that the mayor and all of y'all had let this get this far. This is not a Ward II event. This is a City of Biloxi event. It's always been treated that way. And to say that they're coming here to get all the money, they not coming here to get all the money. They got money. They're raising money, but it should be a community event and Biloxi should lead the way with the event that's been here forever. This goes back to Dr. Mason. He's the one that wanted to call it coastwide. That's why it's called coastwide. Now y'all keep asking about what events are gonna be held? They got New Bethel Church on Main Street in Biloxi. There is a youth summit at DeIrbville and there's a gospel program in Gulfport. Everything else is held in Biloxi, you know? Now you're gonna tell Woody Bailey that he has to go to the Parks and Recreation Department to get his money? I don't see you doing that. Why are you treating this different than you treat Hibernia? That's all I'm saying. Let's not let this be a black eye for Biloxi. You have, I talked to the mayor before the meeting. He said, this is y'all's decision. So I don't know where the $40,000 figure came from, but they're asking you for $10,000. That's the same thing that they've been getting every year. Now this Juneteenth farce, which was strictly political, it started two years ago. Same time that election was going on. So let's just call it what it is, man. You've disrupted this entire Ward II community. You've stirred it up and that's what you saw today. And you're gonna see it for another month. So let's not do that. Let's just support this event, please.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Crell. I would like to make an observation.
I also have an observation.
Okay, as long, as long as we're talking about these different groups, the Martin Luther, MLK Coastwide Celebration, that group has not, from, from what I've heard today, has not really been effective for the past two or three years, for whatever reason. So, so we're dealing with an entity that I don't recall ever seeing before, the Martin Luther King Junior Committee. Okay?
And, and I agree with you. I agree with you.
You may have, I, so the MLK Coastwide Celebration is different than the Martin Luther King Junior Committee. So the Martin Luther King.
We're here, Dr. Tizel. I'm trying to hear you.
The Martin Luther King Junior Committee is the same as the MLK Coastwide Celebration? Is that right?
No, that's not true. That's not true. Dr. Tizel, I see the point of order, Dr. Tizel. Point of order. Point of order. We gotta, we gotta stay on topic.
No, we are staying on topic. I've been, I've listened to everybody's questions and comments. I have a few of my own. So the, the fact that we set aside money for the coastwide celebration, I assume that's, that's an en- an entity. That's who the check went to, that's who the money went to, that's how the money was dispersed. So who's running the MLK coastcelebr- coastwide celebration right now? Mr. Guines, you know, I don't.
I acknowledge no one is, is, is doing that. And, and just to your point there, the only time we heard of this was, like I said, when did you get that letter? That was in October. So we're talking about less than 30 days ago, maybe a little over 30 days ago that, that letter came. So this is not nothing as, as the gentleman up here alluded to. He's making it sound like it was a, a, an ongoing thing and that's simply incorrect and not true. This letter came in from this particular group last month. And so what we're trying to do now is move forward and accommodate and just try to move forward to keep from beating, beating a, a, a dead horse that's already dead. It's not gonna go anywhere. It's time to move forward.
All right, so my, my, my last, my last thought on this matter is, so what will it take to have the Martin Luther King Junior Committee come together with the Legacy Group at this point?
And that's what Ms. Elaine, that's what Ms. Elaine talked about.
That's, that's, that's a.
Is this group any different than anybody else? You know?
Well, I guess we could make them all equally miserable and not donate anything to anybody.
The way are.
Right, right. But I, I don't think it's quite the same thing.
We're gonna talk to Ms. Crawell, who is the chairperson. Did any of y'all receive the committee members that I sent you?
Yes.
Okay, there you go. You were just saying you didn't know who they were. It's the Coastwide MLK Committee. I don't know what other committee there is out there.
I've never, I've never received anything.
So, so if, if that's the group she's representing.
I've never received anything.
So if that's the group she's re- representing, why am I getting this letterhead, which is not the same group?
I have no idea, Paul.
I, I know. You and I have talked about it.
These are all volunteers. It's a volunteer group.
I get it.
There's never been a problem until years ago.
So why can't they all work together?
I don't know. I'm sure they can work together, but it seems like they're being forced to work together, you know? That's what I'm hearing.
Well, I'm thinking if you want the money, if you're fighting over the 10,000 over here and you want some of it or all of it or whatever, that you would get together and work this out in the spirit of Dr. King, which I heard so much about today.
I'm in total agreement with you. I'm hoping they can all come together. And I'm hoping we don't have these problems with Hibernia or any other group because I know y'all gonna treat them all the same, right?
Yeah, we, we cut the Hibernia funding this year.
Hundred's what it is.
Yeah.
Five hundred.
Yeah, we cut it from the previous year.
Understand.
Okay, all right. Anything else? Closing? Thank God.
I mean, we still have to go through the rest of the.
Yeah, we do. Where only it be. All right, George, I believe we stopped with you at B.
I actually started all this.
You started all that. Well, thank you for sitting quietly. Let's continue.
Well, the next one is, uh, in on its facade, the grant money. We taking that out to Economic Development Fund and giving it to who? In.
Yeah, the, these are previous facade grant funds. One is at the Machada Patana Grant and the Bella. So this is just allowing that reimbursement to them. That's the, the funding source was through the Economic Fund.
Well, we had done them before. We doing it again? Machada, we built, they helped them build the.
Well, they have, they get a percentage of the sales tax, uh, uh, once a year. And it's like, uh, it's an annual thing. So this is, uh, it's also probably Desports, seafood. Those are the three facade grants where we have the sales tax.
Does Main Street have anything to do with this?
Next one is, uh.
Hang on just a moment.
Does Main Street have anything to do with this?
They, they administer the grant and they receive a small commission, I think, 1%, something like that.
Okay.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Lawrence.
Speaking of that, I mean, of course, Main Street got a ton of money. They don't need the money from those. What about this Biloxi Greater Development? Has they asked for any money?
Uh, we, we talked about some future facade grants. They were budgeted, uh, they weren't included in the budget and we, uh, but we let them know if they wanted to, if they had a project that would help downtown, help the city. We could look at that in the future.
I know half the people on that board works downtown. So that'd be a good board to be involved with. You know, work at the banks and that, so that's a good thing.
It's a good board.
And the next one is O and P and these are all about knee case. And not gonna vote against these things, but the guy's not doing the job again there. He's not fixing the fences. He's not doing the repair that he's supposed to be doing. So if they come with money, I'm gonna vote against the money thing. This stuff here, when they're just doing this. The man needs to do the job. You paid him a hundred something million dollars and he's not doing what he's supposed to be doing. Follow the contract. It fixes people's yard back to where they were. He can't keep doing what he wants to do and being slow. So I just want to bring it up at this meeting. And anytime money, they're gonna pay me money, I'm gonna vote against it. I'm gonna try to get people to vote against it and kill it. Cause he's not doing what he's supposed to do to the, to people that live in there on all these different streets. And that, that's the problem here. Just wanted to bring it up. You gotta pick that, man. You gotta stay on top of it. I don't know if he even talks to you anymore. All right, Walt, got it. Hey, you have a, you got the stroke. All you can do is talk to him. And I can stop the money line and it get his attention. If it takes that, then I'll get four people to do that. And why, Peter, what is, what is this plan adoption trust fund? What, what are you doing here?
Yeah, this is a, this is a deferred compensation plan that the city has, um, has been involved with, with Nationwide for, I think, a number of years. And, uh, it's just never, they've never spread the contract on the minutes or anything like that. So going forward, they met with us and we, uh, it's an existing plan. It's available to employees.
So it's nothing different, so just as something we just should have already done, had it listed on the, the agenda to vote on it. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
And Peter, this is associated with the Pers Retirement?
And I noticed we had the one, the double A.
Just a minute.
On the revolution with the.
George, just a minute. I'm following up on your question. Just a moment. So I just wanted to be sure, this deferred comp plan, is it, is it the same? Cause Pers offers a deferred comp plan.
Not the same.
It's not the same. So this is.
It's a separate optional, uh, compensation that the employees can choose. I chose it, for example.
Right.
And, and after, everything else is taken out of my.
Sure.
They take, I'm, sets more of that aside. It's, it's in a deferred.
I get that. It's, it's a choice and employees now have a choice when it comes.
Just like, just like the optional life, life insurance.
Right, and all that stuff. Have we, have we had this before or is this a new option?
No, nothing new.
The contract has been around for years.
All right, that's good. That's all I needed to know. Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead, George.
All right, uh, I know this is, I think the first one we're doing is reduction. On AA, the board then go. on, uh, AA, the Boys and Girls Club. So you just list that on the minutes, and then you, but you gonna charge them, you gonna charge them, or you give it to them free, but you have to list it on a minute to prove that, right? On the Boys and Girls Club.
Right. And the-
Yeah.
Now that we've, uh, we've revised our facility rental ordinances, uh, these sort of requests for reduction of rental fees, uh, they're gonna be going through the council, so, uh, I think this is our first one, but I think we can, uh,
Sure.
We might can shorten them up a little bit as far as attaching the non-90s and things like that.
Peter, let me have a, uh, I have a few questions on, on that item as well. They're asking for a, um, a reduced rental fee of $500. What's, I don't know what the current rate is for the rental fee for the, um, for this facility.
Yeah, I think that's a 50% reduction.
All right, so it's a thousand, thousand, okay. And it mentions a security fee that's being waived, and I'm not, that's not the police, that's not the fire watch you have to have in Police Department. I can't find anything about a security fee. Excuse me, a security deposit. What is that? That's the condition of the building that you don't tear it up. How much is that? Does it vary from facility to facility?
Basically, the same amount as the rental. So if it was a thousand dollar rental, there'd be a, normally a thousand dollar security deposit.
And what's the nature of the event for Boys and Girls Club? I don't, I didn't really see. I don't know if it's some sort of awards program or a dinner. Because as you said, we've, we've got, it's our decision to make from here on out, and I wanna be-
No, it isn't.
I wanna be sure that we're following our guidelines.
Christmas party. Christmas party.
Come on up to the mic so you'll be world famous. Christmas party, okay.
Any other questions on that?
Christmas party, thank you.
Christmas party.
That's all, that's all I need to know. All right, Mr. Lawrence, I'm back to you.
Rachel. You sent this out the other day. This involving all that?
Yes.
So everything's listed in here that's been done?
Yes, that's exactly it, and that's why the length of this first one, because I was providing documentation so that you'd be able to see it, since this is the first one.
All right. Yeah, those are guidelines that, guidelines for the council to review when we have these reductions.
It should be.
Right. Thank you. And, and thank you, Rachel. They're very helpful. Anything else, George?
No.
Thank you. Felix, anything? Kenny, you got one? Mr. Schumaker?
I don't have any.
Um, going back to item O, it, uh, and, and that's one of the substitutes. But I noticed that the, the change orders, I think it's for BEA 1 and BEA 3, are both identical at $13,923. I'm thinking- No, no, it's- Right. No, that's, that's all right. No, no, that's fine. I, I figured it's just a typo or a cut and paste, but-
Six is for $13,923 for BEA 1.
Correct.
Thirty-seven is for $121,863.87.
Okay. So that's the difference. Could we consider that a Scrivener's error?
And the subs, it should, did you get the substitutes?
I did. Oh, I'm sorry. I was, I was looking for you out there. Walt, you're over here. Okay, so, so it's two different amounts. They're not identical amounts, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Right, okay, that's all. Thank you. Thank you, Rachel. Thank you, Walt. The only other question I have is, um, item S. And I just wanted to be sure that this was accurate. Item S is a subscription to Workbench from Scopinow for use by the Police Department. It's $20,000 the first year, an open source intelligence tool for social media investigations. It lists on the invoice the, the sales price of $15,000. The discount is 33 and a third percent for a total of, then it says $20,000. Are we, are we paying $20,000 or $15,000 for this? I suspect it's $15,000, but I wanna be sure.
It's $15,000. I didn't catch that.
No, no, that's fine. And I, I would've asked Shane, but I didn't, I didn't say him. Thank you, chief. I figured that's probably what it was. All right, any other que, um, if there are no other questions, we'll go ahead and vote on the consent agenda, and then we'll come back and get the exceptions. All in favor of the consent agenda is prevent, is presented with exceptions to follow? All in favor? That's a 7-0 vote. Thank you. All right, Mr. Lawrence, any exceptions?
None.
None. None? Ms. Newman? None. Mr. McGilvery? None.
None.
None?
B.
B?
B, B-boy.
B. And, uh, my only exception is on B as well. Give me a moment to make a note. All right. Thank you. That was a lengthy section. That brings us to our, we used to hate looking forward to code enforcement, but it's somewhat of a relief that we're this far. So, thank you. All right. You're on, Mr. Krill.
Item A, Genesis Consulting Services LLC, 414 Davis Street. That case has been resolved. Item B, Randall G. James Jr., 161 Rosetti Street. This property's still in violation.
Okay, is there, is Mr. Randall G. James or anyone here to speak on his behalf for the property at 161 Rosetti Street? There being no one, this matter is closed.
Item C, Monolith Debt Strategies, 243 Keller Avenue. That case has been resolved. Item D, Victor Humphrey, 205 Hoxsey Street. That case has been resolved. Item E, Kyle D. Hendricks, 386 Shell Street. That case has been resolved. Item F, Kazidik S. Dennisnet, 175 Clayborne Street. That case has been resolved. Item G, Titan Investments LLC, 379 Shell Street. That case has been resolved. Item H, ACL Inc., 1614 Fifth Street. This property's still in violation.
All right, is there anyone here to speak on behalf of ACL Inc. on the matter of 1614 Fifth Street? There being no one, this hearing is closed.
Item I, Hai Thon Tran, 289 Third Street. This property's still in violation.
Is Mr. Hai Thon Tran or anyone here to speak on his behalf concerning the property at 289 Third Street? Yes, there is. Please come up, sir, and if you would, have a seat and state your name and your address so the clerk can get that on the record.
My name is Wong Tran. Uh, I don't live in the, uh, home, but I speak for my dad because he passed away.
Okay, so, so this is your father?
Yes.
That, okay. And, um, Jerry, do you know if this is in an estate or not, or? Okay. And, and the issue was what, Jerry? Okay. Third Street. I'm gonna assume Third Street. Is that in Ward 1?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, could you plan on working to clean it up? Or you gonna do that?
Yeah, we can.
If we give you 30 days extension, could you have it done in 30 days? We could do that, pass that, so I'll make that motion. We have 30 days extension.
I'll second it.
All right, so, uh, there's a motion in a second to ex, extend of this matter for another 30 days, so it'd come before us in roughly the middle of December. All in favor? All right, passes on a 6-0 vote. Uh, note that Mr. Guines was absent from the room.
Item J, Alfonso Walker Jr., 227 Nixon Street. That case has been resolved. Item K, Nathan L. Prescott, 149 Rosetti Street. This property's still in violation.
All right. Is Mr. Nathan L. Prescott here or anyone present to speak on his behalf concerning the matter of 149 Rosetti Street?
I, I have a question for the director. Is this just grass cutting, or is it anything else, you know?
Overgrowth.
Just overgrown?
Yes, sir.
I don't know. Has anybody you talked to?
Haven't received anything back. Sent the notices out and haven't received any response.
So you know, know, you don't know actually owns the property that would cut it?
Oh, yes, sir. Nathan Prescott, it's in his name.
Um, but you said you had not talked to him?
No, sir. We've had no communication.
So what we do, go in and cut it, and then charge them?
If, if you, if you approve it, what'll hap, we'll go get bids from-
Well, we can't give him 30 days if he not here to talk to. I mean, we give him 30 days, would you call him, or you don't, you don't do that?
Well, no, we, we do. If y'all decide to give him 30 days, then we'll do everything we can to communicate with him.
He's just cutting the grass. He's cutting a lot, is all it is, correct?
Yeah.
Well, let's recommend 30 days. Take a shot with that.
There's a motion by Mr. Lawrence.
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor of the extension of 30 days on this matter? Passes on a 6-0 vote. Note again that Mr. Guines is not present. That brings us to the next item, item L.
Amos Hamilton Jr., 217 Baptist Alley. That case has been resolved. Item M, Audrey Griffith, 225 Baptist Alley. That case has been resolved. Item N, Adam F. Brown and Jacob Stanislav Pachowak-
Nice try.
Okay. All right, 174 Violet Street. This property's still in violation.
Oh, now it's my turn, huh?
Yep.
All right, is Adam F. Brown or Jacob Stanislav Pachowak present to speak on the matter of 174 Violet Street? Okay, there being no one, this hearing is closed. Next item, Mr. Krill.
Item O, Andrea Hope Smith, 1225 Irish Hill Drive. That case has been resolved. Item P, Addis Win, 285 Laurel Court. That case has been resolved.
Thank you, Mr. Krill. I'll entertain a motion on the routine agenda.
Move.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavin. Uh, questions, George?
All right, Walt, you up here. Been here all day long. You gotta have good news for us.
I wanna thank Commissioner Sean Tindall for joining us today and coming to hear the news of our funding here with the City Biloxi. Uh, right now, we don't have anything in Mississippi PA website, uh, but we do have, the next round of funding will be close to $786,000. Uh, the contractor was supposed to provide a three-month advance draw so that we submit that to MEMA, and they know how much to advance his funds. We asked him for two, three weeks to provide that. Uh, he didn't, so I provide that to the state, uh, which is why we do have some money coming. It's just not in the system yet.
Uh, the problem we have with him, the Neakase not doing what he's supposed to be doing? I mean, have you sat down and tried to discuss that with him?
We have, and we have another meeting scheduled for this Friday with the administration and Mr. Neakase.
Could you call him and give him an update? Because if they got money on the table, I'm gonna get them to pull it. Man gotta take care of the drive. He's getting paid a ton of money, a hundred something million dollars, and not doing his little part. That's not right.
The situation is, they get paid for what they do. You know, what you're complaining about is they're not doing it fast enough. So we, we, the, the funding is related to the items that they do work. We having, you know, issues with making sure, before we do the final surface in a number of places, that there are no problems with the subsurface drains, uh, you know, the stuff that leaks that may be popping up two years from now. We're doing, we're awaiting, I think, of the second set of videos for a number of streets in St. Michael's projects, and that's the thrust of what, what we're doing. I think we're, uh, there's a couple of options that Walt put on the table. Uh, we could cover a lot of stuff up and with maybe an additional warranty, get to, get a lot of the stuff finished. But it's, we would rather have it fixed before we put the final surface on. So that's the, the thrust of this meeting. Where are we? And I think the extension as far as days, uh, bring it is up to right at the end of this year. Uh, but we'll, we'll finalize that. We'll keep you posted if, on that part. But look, no one wants this thing closed and finished faster than I do.
Definitely. So they, they're just not doing the job that's right for the people to live there. And that's just not right for them. When they took something down, didn't put it back. I'm, I can see the, the next layer, put the tar, you know, all this. I'm following. I'm not, I'm not against any of that. I'm getting, I'm like you. I just should get it over. It's been enough. But anyway, I just wanna make sure. We're gonna pay attention. Thank you.
Any other questions on the routine agenda? There being none, uh, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the routine agenda is presented? It's approved on a 6-0 vote. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
To move.
By Mr. Lawrence. By Mr. McGilvery. Any questions? Any discussion? Let's go home. All in favor? Approved on a 6-0 vote. Thank you.